...
Hey, get one please.
So moved, done.
Second, Fergus.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion-
Any opposed, motion passed, a six to zero. All right, it is July 11, 2023, and this is the City of Iowa City Work Session. The first item on the agenda is the University of Iowa update on Capitol building plans. And are you just gonna jump, jump on up and come on up? I love it. Welcome.
Mayor Teague, how are you?
Awesome and amazing.
House members. Jeff, is this thing fired up and ready to go?
You're ready to go?
Yeah, I'll bet it is. I don't see it.
Oh, it's bottom left corner there.
All right. Oh, great.
And some of the council don't know who you are, so.
Absolutely. Yeah, good afternoon. Rod Leonards, I am Senior Vice President for Finance and Operations and University Architect at the University of Iowa. I've been with the university for, well, I'm in my 30th year and was born and raised in Iowa City. I have the pleasure of meeting with Mayor Teague and Jeff on a regular occasion with our president and some of our senior staff as a chance to catch up. And during that, we thought it'd be a nice idea to come here and present to you some of the projects that are going on. Do you want me to go any further than that? Anything that you want to say before I jump in?
That's good, that's great, yes.
I see the G is missing in part of the logo, so I'm gonna hope that the graphics on this are the same as what I sent. If not, we'll, it looks like it's cutting off a little bit of the right side of the screen, and I'll describe it regardless. But what I'm gonna present to you is a summary of a unique 10-year master plan we were asked to provide for the Board of Regents at the start of 2022. Typically, our projects are delivered on a project-by-project basis with the Board of Regents. In this case, what they wanted to do, because we have a lot going on, as you might be well aware, related to the hospital, they wanted us to contextualize that with the entire campus and give a picture of the master planning and the project planning we intend for the next 10 years. It's obviously at 10 years, it's not exactly as it will be delivered, but it's a good look at the highlights of the primary directions and priorities for the University of Iowa for the next 10, 10 years. And as Iowa City hosts our campus, we are, there's a fuzzy edge all over the place with us, and we interact. I will say, just as one small piece of introduction, and we hear our presidents say it a lot, but I do as well in the circles that I travel in with respect to other universities, administrative leaders, university architects or planners. I am, we are, not aware of any other university setting that has a better town-gown relationship than we have with our hosts in Iowa City, Corleville, University Heights. Many universities are suing their cities and cities suing their universities because of inconveniences, and we know the challenges we can have, but the partnerships that we have forged, the ways we've worked together have benefited hopefully Iowa City, but certainly the University of Iowa. So we are always thinking in terms of our community as we develop the campus. And with that, I'll go ahead and start and see what it looks like on your screen as we go. Yeah, just a little bit cut off on the, maybe the final 20% of these slides. This is not intended to be anything to take in other than our campus map, which I use as a background for, for the presentation of these projects, and I will theme them as I go with the different parts of our campus. Here you cut off a little bit more. You missed the Pinnacle Crest, and that's what those lines are all headed toward. As we look at the themes of the different parts of our campus that represent the changes that are gonna occur in the campus during the next 10 years, we certainly center on, as you can see in the inset photograph, our Pinnacle Crest, which was the, really, the origin of the state, of our city, of our community, and of our university. The four buildings that surround the old Capitol, the old Capitol built in 1842, those buildings surrounding it, as a bit of a history lesson, I suppose, emulated or copied the Chicago World's Fair of 1893. And over a 25-year period, from 1898 to 1924, we created the four buildings that now represent the Pinnacle Crest, the former state Capitol grounds. And it is the academic heart of our campus, geographical heart of our campus, and symbolic heart of our campus. But the three buildings that I've circled, McLean Hall number one, Jessup number two, and McBride Hall, are all buildings at or over 100 years of age and have not been updated. Schaefer Hall, to the upper right in this photograph, was updated, was modernized in 1998, and those changes have actually stuck very well. The building is still very effective as it was renovated, but the other three need help, and we're working with our state to enable those projects. All of the projects we have have ripple effects. Those buildings aren't empty and ready to be renovated, so we have to work through a series of projects that will enable that. Couple of them shown here on this image are Gilmore Hall, which is across the street from the Pinnacle Crest. It was our 1910 build for our College of Law. And then the original 1936 Art Building, which has been mothballed now for more than 14 years, now 15 years, because of the flood, in recovering that and protecting that with FEMA, it was always envisioned that it would be reprogrammed at some point. And we are in the programming process for that moving. We would eventually then move the Graduate College and a couple of other academic programs to the, to a renovated and modernized original art building. That will give us the room to make the renovations and modernizations to the Pinnacle Crest and make it even more centered on academics and the student life on our campus. Also on the east side, and a high priority for us, is our Iowa Memorial Union, originally built in 1925. You may have seen, we recently received approval by the Board of Regents to advance the modernization of the Iowa Memorial Union. And in partnership with our student body, the student body government, both graduate and undergraduate, agreed, like our campus recreation and wellness center, which was done in 2010, to help in the funding of that through a student fee. And that will allow us to modernize that building, which was impacted by the flood, but was not updated at the time of the flood. FEMA did not, Iowa City suffered through some of this as well. They would recover as was, not as it should be or according to what we needed. So after the period of audit from all of our flood recovery expired about a year and a half ago, we are free now to advance modernization and fixing of a lot of deferred maintenance needs in that building. It has a couple of other inset photos, again, relating to other projects that we would do. You can see right next to the Iowa Memorial Union is the worst parking ramp in the world, the Iowa Memorial Union Parking Ramp. Built in the early 1960s, the bad ones are always built really well, meaning it's not aging to a point where we have to take it down. But the way it was pinned into all too tight a site for a parking ramp, there's a circular spiral that goes up in today's, actually, today's turning radius on a lot of the SUVs can't make that, so a lot of people are three-point turning all the way up, and then a bunch of little dead-end parking places. And so the problem is you can't fix that without a larger footprint. And it so happens that as we're planning and will be advancing the IMU Modernization Project, the lowest photograph shows Halsey Hall, which was the women's gymnasium. It is no longer, we used to have a pool in it, we've covered that up, it's for the dance department. It was a building we actually closed down during COVID because it has such an antiquated circulation, air circulation system, that we didn't feel it was a safe place for us to have people there when we were worried about health and well-being of folks during COVID. As such, we began to look at options even after the flood as to how we could do better for our dance department. Return to the other side of the river, the top photograph, is the 1969 original Museum of Art. And that building, because of large volumes, high ceilings, not many columns, because there were galleries, fit the program by size and by spaces, almost ideally for the dance department. It would put the dance department back on the arts campus, right next to theater, right next to hancher and the other performing arts areas, and would make good use of a building that was recovered by FEMA, the museum of art. That would then allow us to take this very operationally obsolete building in the, in Halsey Hall, and remove it and allow for enough space for us to build a representative place for visitor parking. It is often the very first place that prospective students and their families visit our campus, that's their first stop, and the experience in that ramp. And so connections, better pedestrian connections to the Iowa Memorial Union and to clearly walk way above it are objectives for that site when we move forward with this project. Next, our Tippi College of Business, 1996 building occupies most of the, of the block that it is on. We have grown by programs and students by almost two times since that building was built. We have faculty sharing offices, and it is the one of our 12 colleges that through our space management and planning efforts has a designated space problem with additional square footage needed. They're exploding programs like our Entrepreneurial Studies, which is a leading program in the country, drawing not just business students, but students from many of our colleges, putting the pressure on the Tippi College of Business and the Papa John Business Building. So across the street, and Jeff and his team certainly all know this, across the street, across Clinton Street to the east of this, and straddling both sides of Market Street are two properties the university owns. The one on the upper left is the Fred Riddle property. Fred Riddle had dentistry program or practice, and then apartments in the building as well. He has gifted that site to us, we'll be closing on that within the next year to two years. We work with him on that. And then the lower right hand is showing the other block. Our intent is to grow the Tippi of, Tippi College of Business directly across the street to the south of those two properties, and I'll talk in a bit about what we'll do on the Fred Riddle property in context with our housing and dining program. The next slide has two big buildings and buildings that are important and certainly central to our student success. First, the main library is the largest building on the University of Iowa campus at about 550,000 square feet, was built in 1951. Very antiquated systems, the largest deferred maintenance backlog on our entire campus. And it is in dire need of updating. It's also in dire need of funding to update it, which is a great challenge for this project. It's more likely that we will have to do it in fits and starts and smaller pieces within the building to modernize it. We'll be exploring the viability of the building for the long term, but at this point, I was just meeting with our librarian, John Colshaw, on ways to fundraise for the project and move that forward. The other is the University Capital Center. The university currently owns 62% of the mall, the Hodge Group owns the balance. We have a contract with the Hodge Group to be able to purchase the balance of the building in '24, '25. We can negotiate that and work with the Hodge Group to adjust it. But with, after the flood, it became very important place because the student union was closed. It actually became our student union for as many as five years. And since then, in our campus master planning, a triangle of buildings have become very important for our student success. The Iowa Memorial Union as the social gathering, club space, government space for, and health services space for our students. The library as our academic teaming, mentoring, coaching programs. And the, and the UCC as a student services hub, where we have relocated many of our student services to that building, serving the students. It's been very popular to our students, it's obviously right across the street from the very core of the campus and the Pinnacle Crest. We would intend to maintain the retail that is outboard because it's good for the community and certainly for the students, but to activate some of the spaces that are already being activated on behalf of student services and transactional spaces on behalf of students.
Do you anticipate the inside of that building not being retail, but just the?
Yeah, Mayor Teague, it hasn't been determined at this point. Some of the spaces on the interior are already being changed to different spaces. I think the Hodge Group has found it easier to have the outboard areas as, as retail. We wouldn't necessarily be against retail on the interior, it's just whether or not the services for the students are balanced with what, and by the way, food is part of the service to students, they love food. And where we've been able to have the, the venues that we've had, the students have enjoyed them, and I think the businesses have enjoyed having the students there. So nothing in particular with the planning of that balance of the first floor, but we know there are more, more student services to be collected there. One of those that we're working on right now in a space that used to be, but then became vacant on the inboard side, is split in two, is where the Four Seasons Clothing Store was, split in two, one for disability services, for the Student Disability Services Department and office for the university, serving our students with various either mobility or, or other disabilities. And right next to that, we're in construction right now on what will become a welcome sort of front-facing portion of our campus safety unit. You know, campus safety is in the building, but downstairs below what used to be J.C. Penney's, I think it used to be a hair salon, and now it's a bunker. And it works well when it needs to be a bunker, but it's not a very friendly face. And we have really been working hard on our relationship with the students, involving students. We have students involved with the Campus Safety Department now, Shout and other programs. And it's been asked for, and actually, campus safety wants to have a presence on the first floor as a place to stop in. Our community service and DEI functions will be in the building at that place, and we look at it as sort of a friendly go-between for the activities that can occur in the mall, but also in the entire campus. The text here is a little cut off in this slide, but what I want to point out is an important element of our campus success and drive is the right sizing of our campus. Over the last five years, we've removed some of the most troubling, problematic, antiquated, operationally obsolete buildings on our campus. Seashore Hall was one of those, a wood frame structure built in 1899, is our first University of Iowa hospitals and clinics. And we moved the hospital in 1928, and it remained there, home to our largest College of Liberal Arts and Science Program, Psychology, for 70 years. Wood frame structure, we had floors that had been decommissioned because of past decade termite challenges, and ultimately was a building that just didn't stand the test of time for us. And yet, it was a big deferred maintenance and energy waster and challenge for us. And so as we look forward, those kinds of examples, they speak to our legislature, who want to know how, if we're right-sized, are we doing the right thing with every state dollar? In this case, a couple of buildings that I'm showing here, West Lawn, which was the 1919 nurses dormitory, it's not used for a dormitory, it has been used for a hodgepodge of things, sits right at the heart of our Health Sciences Research Campus, and we have virtually no space available in the Health Sciences for research, but needs on that front. It's a very low land use efficiency building and has leaking roofs and leaking windows and all kinds of problems. We've been slowly emptying that building for some time. I mentioned health, you can see in the sign, student health and wellness will be part of that IMU modernization, so we will move. And at that point, the building will become mostly empty, and our long-term master plan has that site being used for modern research space for the Health Sciences. I do show the Jefferson Hotel, the Jefferson Building, but hotel, 1912, one of the most opulent in the Midwest when it was built. The university operates all of those floors, but not very effectively. It's still got the structure and the functions, functional layout of a hotel, but we put staff in, in the building, somewhat disconnected with the main parts of the campus. We do not look to rid that building, it's a very personally, very important building in Iowa City, it was our first skyscraper, and, and is an important building to Iowa City, but someone else can do better with it than we can. We would be very directed in any kind of sale or giveaway on that front to make sure that it is protected and that we work with the city to make sure that it's protected. But we are in the post-COVID next stage of work with some of the transactional functions going to online, remote, hybrid situations. We are seeing enough of a change in the way work is done in the transactional part of the university that we believe a litmus test for right sizing our campus is that we won't need the Jefferson Building in the years to come, and so it can go to a higher, better use at, at some point in the future. No hard schedule on it, but that would be generally our, our objective. One thing you can't really see on this slide, but the bottom bullet is Selling Mayflower. I know this has been in the news, the building built in '69 as an apartment, then sold to the university in 1980. It is the least favorite of our residence halls for our freshmen, it is the last filled up, first transferred out. We have lower returning student statistics in that building, it's distance from the other student residence hall, the food service, classes. other student residence hall. The food service classes have proven to be something that doesn't work well for first-year students. And as we look forward, and I mentioned that one site north of the Tippi College of Business expansion site, the Fred Riddle site, we are exploring on that Fred Riddle site, the idea of building our first, many of our peers have them, we don't, but our first returning student residence hall, which would have more sweet style communities. And if we can build that, it's right near the food service at Burge Hall. It'd be an ideal location for returning students. We have fewer returning students, but almost all the freshmen live on campus. And so, we know that we don't have to have the Mayflower to house all of the freshmen on our campus, but we would be short on what we would do for returning students. And that's why we're looking at that option. Currently, that building, Mayflower, is out on the streets. It's being, if you will, shopped or certainly solicited by our real estate agent on that. Spent a lot of interest. It's just been listed. So we're allowing and real estate consultants being is suggesting we wait a few weeks, see what comes in, and then assess at that point. No hard date. When it stops and it's not binding, if we don't think it's good enough for the University of Iowa, we wouldn't sell it. Yes, please.
Yeah. So just curious about what kind of purposes people that are interested in the property are wanting to pursue with it?
Yeah, it's a good question, Andrew. You know, we haven't received or dug into many of the proposals that it's otherwise. Obviously, the building itself is designed for residents. The way it was designed when it was built for apartments, it has a kitchen, kitchenette, and a bathroom that is surrounded by two separate units or two, actually four rooms, two on each side, that would house two students on both sides. How the residence system used it. It could be flexible, and that could all be one unit with a living area and bed area, and then the kitchen and bathroom in the middle. It is, the building was originally designed as two towers. We have worked to connect the two so that the elevators can be shared, and so there's more of a community. But one could imagine you could treat it still as two different towers. It could be student housing and senior housing, could be different types of housing in a different era. It could have been part of it is used for office space, but that's not much of a market need these days. Certain floors, we've already done some of this. The lower floors can be converted into more amenity space, which has become more popular and doesn't matter what age group for housing. So there are some flexibilities there. But it's hard to say right now. That's some of what we've been thinking, I would assume, based on its proximity to the campus, that it serves, probably serves a commercial niche for students, if not others living and working on campus. It's a good question. There's always a slide related to athletics. And there's a reason athletics does. It's one of the auxiliaries of the University of Iowa and an active part of our campus. One of the things to note, the projects enabled by athletics are enabled by their donor base. The University of Iowa Athletic Department is fiscally independent of the university. I give one exception to that. By Iowa law, they and we are not allowed to borrow money or bond for anything other than capital dollars. So when COVID hit and they lost to football seasons, basketball seasons, and the others, the athletic department needed to and asked the university to give them a loan. They are paying that back with interest to the university. And that has allowed them to continue forward. But otherwise, and again, they'll pay that back with with interest. Otherwise, they stand on their own bottom. And that is still relatively unusual at a national level. We're helped by being in the Big Ten, obviously. So the projects that occur in the athletic department are driven by donor dollars. You see half of a rendering. Actually, see the half of the rendering that doesn't show the building. But the newest and next project for them is that wrestling center, the Goshke Family Wrestling Center, which is well under construction, project's going well, 100% donor-funded project that will be complete in probably April this next year, and has a new connection to the floor with a new tunnel to the floor of Carver-Hawkeye Arena. It will, in effect, be the final addition to Carver-Hawkeye Arena. There's more space on the site. So but an important project for that for that program, for which the University of Iowa is noted, and will, in about a half hour after the schedule is released, will sell out the entire season. Sort of cultural. We are doing other projects with athletics. They're going to look at the various modernizations to Carver-Hawkeye Arena. There's a field hockey project, a baseball project, a gymnastics project that they're working on again with donors and with revenues from the auxiliary that is the athletic department. Do have a bit of a catch-all when we're working with the Board of Regents, the other things that we're working on some of those priorities, East and West Campus Research Growth. We've seen a lot of growth in research on our campus and more diversification. We've typically been an NIH-rich campus, mostly medical, but thanks to our Space Physics Program in Van Allen Hall and our partnerships with NASA, our largest grant of all time, $115 million, was awarded by NASA to our Space Physics Group. And those diversifications protect the university in the future, but they also reveal that we have some undernourished spaces for the high expectations of groups like NASA. So we'll continue to look at both East and West Side research growth in the decade to come. Campus parking, campus services are always a churn on our campus, especially in urban setting and the things we're working. I mentioned housing care and modernization. We continue to go through all of our residence halls. We're at a pinch right now because 300 beds in Hillcrest are out because we're modernizing a major portion of that building, which will be great for the students that get in there after it's modernized. And then obviously TBD, new opportunities do arise and donor opportunities do arise on a regular basis. And the whole notion of a master plan is to make sure that we're ready for those and can welcome them and make them work. Final slide I have is one that just highlights, as you can see, a one and a two, and then an A, B, C. These are some of the healthcare projects that are really driving a lot of the dust in our area. Number one, where you see number one, this would be the, this would be the Jacobson. It's driving the largest gift in the history of the University of Iowa, $70 million gift for an inpatient and operatory care tower at location number one. It would be a north version of the Children's Hospital. A project of that scale, not unlike the Children's Hospital, project of that scale doesn't happen by just plopping it down on the ground. There are things around it that are impacted from utilities and roads, but more specifically, it lands on another very old parking ramp and one that is actually having conditional challenges, Old Hospital Ramp One. So that ramp will be lost to this project. It'll be occupied by the footprint of the tower. Thus, the A you see on the map, north of Kinnick Stadium, is a project that is already under construction. That is a new 950-space parking ramp that will serve both the staff and faculty, doctors, nurses that work within the hospital, but also patients. As we look at the network of ramps that we have that serve, it will, it will connect to the overhead walkway that you see that goes over Hawkins Drive and directly into the hospital. B and C that you see on the map, B is also under construction as we speak. The site is enclosed. That was what we referred to as Parking Lot 14, east of the Field House. It is going to be a large health sciences academic building, serving our speech and hearing program, which is either number one or number two in the nation, depending on the year. Their old building, built in the 60s, is in the footprint of the future tower. So they need to move and modernize. They're glad to be a victim in this case. And then also, two other rated programs. Our Physical Therapy Program in the Carver College of Medicine is the number two program in the country, and our Health and Human Physiology Program, the largest and the fastest growing program in our College of Liberal Arts and Sciences. It includes a really fast-growing sports medicine program. Will all be located in this new academic building. They all have functions and faculty that relate to each other but had been separate. This will only make those strong programs even stronger as we move forward. And then C will be, at this stage, because those programs welcome not just students, but also subjects, because a lot of them do research and work that serve the public, we have to have adjacent parking. We did a lot of study to find out if we could put parking underneath the building. We're saving millions and millions by using available space you see on C that will be developed as surface parking space that will serve visitors to the building and also visitors to the little building between the two, which is the Jourdain Athletic Learning Center. It's a standalone facility for our 625 student athletes. It's been in place since 2005. Need place for them to go in the evenings for the work that they do. That takes us to almost the full word Iowa. And I'll be glad to answer any questions. It does not address all of the projects over a 10-year period. It's a highlight reel of the things we're aiming. It also looks like a lot of work. It is a lot of work, but it's also spaced out over 10 years. It actually does not show, apart from a hospital project to do, does not show an escalation in the amount of work on our campus. And as I pointed out, on the main campus, it's actually a slowdown in taking care of what we have as opposed to more and more new, with the exception of the of the Tippi College of Business growth.
Thank you so much. That's a lot of great information. I wonder if you couldn't just give us a little bit of information about the North Liberty?
Yeah, absolutely. Yeah, sure. As if the hospital's not vibrant. So we've all heard the challenges related to University of Iowa Hospitals and Clinics, the only tertiary quantenary hospital in the state. We have a mission that we take everyone insured or not. These missions have driven us to a point of 100% occupancy within the beds of our, not only our hospital, but our emergency room. It's not sustainable. It's not efficient. It's not in the best interest of care. We have quite a few of our rooms are double beds with two patients in a room. That is not a standard that we or others aim for, but you can't do anything about it until you have capacity. And so, the tower I mentioned is an incredibly important part of that in the main campus. The North Liberty Project, which we refer to as a hospital as well, has about 40 beds. It's primarily a 24-hour surgery center. So the more ambulatory, in fact, we're relocating our or locating our orthopedics clinics and staff and faculty at that location. It also has a fully functioning emergency room at that location. It can also be added on to over time. We have acreage adjacent to it where over time we can add to it. But the project itself has been going wonderfully in a time when construction, staffing, and available positions is a challenge for everyone. We've seen it in the escalated time and costs. That project is currently under budget and under its expected time. So we're thrilled with the partnership we have with the contractors working on it. And it has gone very well so far. Yeah, it's really taking shape.
Thanks. Well, counselors, any?
I had a question about the status on Manville Heights. You know, there was the discussion of the practice field and developing there. What's happening?
Yeah, thank you, John. In the theme of some of the areas, whether it be Mayflower or the Athletic Club site near Finkbine or the Park Road, former BAM practice field, we've been encouraged by the Board of Regents to right-size to make sure that the assets we're paying for are paying dividends to our students and to our objectives. That's a site that, since we moved the BAM practice to the Hawkeye Campus west of Finkbine, we've done nothing, no programming on it, except mow it and take care of snow and other things and spend about $45,000 a year to just care for it. And so, in that spirit of looking at those assets, one of the things that we went and met with and visited with the neighbors on was a redevelopment plan, a development opportunity for a developer to come in. Again, one of the things we were very careful to do, because it's a wonderful neighborhood, we look to strengthen it, not harm it, is we put three representative neighbors on our planning team. We asked them to write the intro to the RFP process for us. We worked with the city. One of the concerns we heard was it's so close, it's really not a park. It's a flat plot of grass, but there is a park, yours, City Park, right across the street. But quickly, they said, but it's hard for our neighborhood to get to it. Whether true or not, it's viewed as a thoroughfare on Park Road and tough to kind of get through that to enjoy the park. We intend to work with the city to improve the connection points to the City Park through this project. And again, it would be non-binding. If we don't find a development that's fitting, we wouldn't take it. We have held on that project currently, primarily because of what we're seeing around us with high interest rates, high construction costs, and long lead times. We've seen those challenges on some other sites like the Finkbine site, where a developer was selected for that and in the end couldn't do the project. Too costly, too many delays. And so, we don't have a reason to hurry the process. We're going to let the time solve it. But we are ready to explore that option in what the year to come.
Any significant outdoor developments in terms of, you know, the common spaces, the, you know, the spaces between the buildings, shall we say?
On campus?
Yeah.
Yeah, absolutely. One, we are, we're as proud or more proud of our landscaping now than we've ever been. We've really worked, I got a great team, and they've worked hard over this last decade to really work on the spaces that connect the buildings. We have a new infusion of pocket parks on our campus, even with some water features that we've really received nice and positive comments on. We've got an entire site improvement plan that allows us to look for donors and others that celebrate gateways, that look for other new ways to celebrate pockets of our of our landscape. In working with Iowa City and working with Corville, the whole River Trail process, we have and continue to aim at improving what we do on both sides of the river. We just advanced a project, or Iowa City has, with the idea of grant dollars that would make the connection from Dubuque Street down to the river at Park. We're just as behind this as Iowa City would be. Again, another one of those examples of partnerships that we have. But in a fairly urban campus, the green space is obviously very important. I think one great example is Gibson Square on Burlington Street. It used to be just sort of an underutilized pass-through green space, not that that was wrong. Since we located the Stanley Museum of Art at the west end of that and made that park a sculpture park, its traffic and the compliments we get are far more than they've ever been. So I think it's not necessarily about finding more green space, but really taking advantage of the green space we have when we do the Memorial Union Project. We're looking at modernizing and programming elements of Hubbard Park, along with the perimeter of the IMU, to bring in gardens and other ways for mental health and experiential spaces that are both inside and outside of the Memorial Union. We have a very active gardening student group that does work out on the Hawkeye Campus. They'd like to be on the main campus. And our notion is to incorporate that into the Iowa Memorial Union Project so that the site itself starts to act as a garden for students, whether you're a gardener or not, to experience.
Great.
Yeah. Yeah, a lot of exciting things on the landscape front. We're very proud of it. Thanks for asking.
Having spent 38 years of my life at University Hospital, working at University Hospital, as you can tell, from 1974 till 2012, I saw it grow immensely.
Immensely, like by about 4 million square feet.
You know, we used to joke that, oh, it's going to be over to Melrose at some point, and it is now currently. And of course, as it grew, we also saw then units shuffled around and moved around and empty spaces used for offices, et cetera. Very good planning on the most part for using that space that the units were moved from. So I just kind of wanted some clarification. I'm a little confused on this new North Tower thing. Then are the, all of the inpatient units then from the existing hospital going to be moving over to there? Or how is that going to work? And then what would be done with that space?
Yeah, Pauline, it's a, it's a great question. The major project of the tower will enable a whole series of projects within the main hospital, not only to modernize it, but to reprogram it for highest use. We, to get to all single rooms, you have to have more beds just to spread out that way as opposed to just more beds. And there's a certificate of need program that limits the number of beds we're even licensed to have. We do have ability to grow that number within the hospital. But the idea would be, the tower would primarily be a patient bed tower with floors of operatory. So we will have operatory space within it. And then we will go and modernize the pavilions that have beds now, modernize those to decompress them to single rooms, and also them to single rooms, and also modernize the way they work for nurses, for staff, for doctors, and for patients. And using some of the best practice models we learned with the children's hospital, there are new and better ways. Some of them call them Disney-esque kind of onstage and offstage or backstage things you do, so that the patients don't see all of the work that happens. And it's good for them. It's good for us. They're not in our way. And so, absolutely, the beds, not only the beds will move there, we'll add beds there that will allow us to decompress in the main hospital.
Okay.
But it's a, yeah, it's a great question, and it is complex. It's an amazing sort of spaghetti set of projects that happen. But it starts with a tower that enables it.
Well, that's good to hear. Like I said, I still have this heartfelt connection to it.
Absolutely. Well, thank you.
So, that's good to hear. It's growing and expanding and still a great place.
Yeah, thank you. Sean?
So, anyway, first of all, thank you for coming and for this presentation. I know that it's nice to hear, at least as one gauge of the success of such an important institution, all of these building projects, certainly an indicator of good health and lots of programs expanding. Great to hear. One question I do have, and maybe you kind of touched on this a little bit when you were talking about Mayflower, maybe you could circle back to it.
Sure.
Is the undergraduate student housing component, which is something that definitely you talk about town and gown, that's definitely a shared sort of thing that we, you know, that we either provide or don't provide for our undergraduate students, and we want to have good housing options. Could you speak a little bit more to what the university's, like, in the 10-year plan to increasing dormitory space? Are there some plans? If so, what do those look like to sort of ease some of that pressure?
Sure. Yeah. So, first of all, unlike some of our peer institutions, we don't require students to live on campus. Yet, somewhere around 97% of the first-year students that come to the University of Iowa do live in our residence hall system. With Mayflower, we have a capacity within our current living situation, save Hillcrest's 300 beds, which has put a pinch on us. But as it's normally arranged, we have enough for all of our first-year students and somewhere around 800 to 1,000 returning students. That has been right-sized based on requests. A reality in Iowa City, I don't know that it's necessarily the case in other university towns, is that for many of the apartments, first-year students have to know who their roommates are and where they're going to live by no later than November, if not sometimes October. That's a tough challenge for a lot of students, especially in a COVID, post-COVID world, where we have seen evidence that more people are introverted. It's harder to bring them out. We have more programs to bring students into smaller communities, to get them out of their rooms, to get to know people. And by October, you're supposed to know who it is that is a good influence, a good friend, and that you want to live with them for a full year in an apartment. It can be stressful for some students, ideal for others. But that's a good part of the reason why we still have that 800 to 1,000 students that want to choose to live still on campus, even though our residence halls are designed prototypically for first-year students. Double-loaded corridors, rooms on each side of the corridor for two roommates. And we see that many of the students prefer to either have a single room or have a community of roommates, that sort of thing. We don't offer any of those at this point. Most of our peers do. The count of residence hall beds we have, if we got rid of Mayflower today, we would have a capacity for all incoming students, freshmen, first-year students, and roughly 300 additional beds. And what that would mean is we would be able to offer less than might be the market to live on campus. That's why we're looking at the Fred Riddle property for an opportunity to put in some unique, dedicated to returning students. Some students will still pick to live in, say, Elizabeth Catlet Hall and others, and pick their roommates for that. But some who want an apartment-esque setting will be able to here with a residence hall director, with RAs, with teaching space, teaming space, social space that we have in our residence halls have that in that setting. That site probably doesn't satisfy the number that we would need. We have looked at other sites adjacent to North Hall and other places on our campus that might afford some future options for more housing. But when it comes to the undergraduate population and the Iowa City apartment market, we do stay aware and work closely with Jeff and the team, stay aware of where things are. Jeff is, in the meetings that you have, a chapter of the meetings we have, the president, are some of the latest development opportunities or proposals or others. Some of them have already been recognized. There's been more collection of apartments right at the border of the campus. I think there, as I understand the city's objectives too, there are some positives to that, in that the more residential areas can be free for more residential areas. But we're not looking at growing the population of the University of Iowa from a student perspective very much. Last year, we had the third-largest class of incoming freshmen. We're at that this year. But our objective is not to, there's not a specific sweet spot, but not to really go more than, say, 32,000 students. And I think one of the secret sauces the University of Iowa has is its scale. Many of our peers are three times our size. And people don't know each other and get lost in that very urban scale environment. We're small enough to know each other and to feel comfortable, whether it's student-to-faculty or staff-to-staff on this campus. And we recognize that that's something that fits Iowa City well. So, we don't have a big need to grow student population, or rather, student housing on our campus. But step by step, we'll be exploring what we can do for returning students. We do have some space on the west side of the river as well, where Quad Rangle, the east portion of Quad Rangle Residence Hall used to reside, where we can put another returning student residence hall there, kind of at that edge of the Quad Ravine, skunk hollow for some of you who have been here too long. So, we have that in our master plan, but no big plans to grow beyond that description.
Thank you.
Yep.
Can you walk us through what the transition will be like for, you know, after the sale of Mayflower, when it comes to, you know, where the students are going to go? Are they going to be there next year? You know, pardon my ignorance.
Yeah. No, it's a good question. So, part of what we have advertised is that the university will continue to use Mayflower this year, this academic year, and would plan to not be assigning beds for the following fall. That would be the base intent. We don't know what the proposals will be when they come back. It could be that somebody says, well, we can make a go of this, but we want to make sure we've got a little runway. If you could have students assigned to maybe one of the towers or both of the towers for one more year, we could be amenable to those kinds of arrangements. And it'll depend on the proposals. But we will be ready to leave the residence hall after this coming academic year.
So, do you anticipate the new residence hall to be completed by that time, or?
No.
No.
No. We made the decision based on the fact that we would have enough capacity for our first-year students. We will have, by the end of this next year, we will have completed the Hillcrest project, having a wiggle room of that additional 300 beds. And we just will have first-come, first-served basis for the returning student capacity. And it will mean that it's likely more returning students would have to opt for something other than a residence hall.
Yeah. So, like, an increase of, it's about around 700 in the market?
Yeah. If we stopped right now, that would be roughly what we'd look at. We might see a little more capacity on our campus because of the Hillcrest work. There are always options. If we get too many requests and we're concerned, you may have experienced, I experienced as a student here, of us going to increase number of triple beds, where we can increase, if we need to, we can increase the capacity in our residence halls. It's not historically ideal for the students, for the size of the rooms, to have triples. But we've done it before, and we, you know, we can certainly do it if we need to.
Rob, what is the scope of this as far as investment? So, over the 10 years, what's it going to cost? And is that, can you sort of speak to how that might be distributed in that timeframe?
Yeah. So, if we look at it in two pockets, healthcare in the hospital and the main campus, a vast majority of the work I described from a dollars perspective is in the healthcare side. That would be from hospital usage funds, as they call it. It'd be the revenues from the hospital. And the North Liberty project is costing the hospital. And as it opens, it then begins to generate the revenue that will enable the next step of projects. And that's how the plan for the hospital project works. It's self-contained as an auxiliary, so those aren't state or university dollars associated with it. And it's based on debt coverage, days cash on hand, and all of the balances that the finance team for both the university and the hospital work on. Same with any of our auxiliaries. Athletics, as I said, primarily gift-related and revenue-related on the athletics projects. Housing also stands on its own as an auxiliary. So, as we work on this, the purchase price of a Mayflower project will enable them to invest in the returning hall. There are specific, as a bonded enterprise, there are specific debt coverage percentages they have to maintain. They coordinate that with our office, and we will always make sure we do that. If we can't afford to do a project and show that it's paid back, we don't do it. But it's fairly clear in a residence hall system, the beds cost this much, that many fill it up, you know what the revenue is. On the main campus side, we do continue to request specific appropriated funds from the state of Iowa. That's independent of the state appropriations for operations of the university, which are very flat. We don't get, nor do we really expect. Though, we certainly ask, our Board of Regents fight for and ask for more funds. We generally see a flat line on that. But capital project investments are different. The College of Pharmacy Building, which was completed just a couple, few years ago, was a project the largest in the state's history of an appropriation. They appropriated $64 million for that project. Now, they don't just appropriate that. We invested a partnered $28 to $30 million. So, there's always a partnership. But we're asking the state every year, what we're doing is changing from asking for new buildings, like a pharmacy building, to money to buy down deferred maintenance. It's not very sexy, but we want the money, we'd like to have the money in the partnership to simply make the operation of the university more effective and cost-effective and efficient. We believe that also speaks to the state, and we know that the state likes when we take truly antiquated and obsolete buildings and don't keep paying for them and caring for them. There's a level of efficiency that they want to see from us as well. Otherwise, it's our revenues. It's the money that we have in investments, it's the money that we have in deferred maintenance that we pay ourselves in effect. We hold back funds to pay for deferred maintenance by the millions of dollars each year. In general, our campus is cared for better than many of our peers, probably again because of scale. We've been able to keep up with it more than many of our peer institutions have. But it is a challenge. It is a challenge everywhere. It is for the city as well. But the central projects come from ourselves, from the state, from gifts. We rely more and more heavily on philanthropy and driving those projects with partners of alumni and fans of the University of Iowa. And we have meaningful projects, like the one right at the end of Clinton Street, right across the street from the President's Residence on Clinton Church. We just finished a new building there for the number-one nationally-rated nonfiction writing program. That is a new home, a new building for them, that was paid 100% by private donors and has been completed, and they'll be activating that for this next semester. That's just one small example, but they happen all over our campus. The generosity of donors to the university are remarkable and make a remarkable difference.
I really appreciate that. As far as all the different sources and also understanding the auxiliary functions that have to be sort of self-sustaining. I think I read something in the paper that, just on the hospital side, the anticipated 10-year investment was something like $2 billion in capital. Is that?
Starts there.
Starts there. Okay. So, what's your overall 10-year plan?
All of those things. Well, some of them are pre-planning, and so, they don't have specific numbers. But I can tell you, the enabling projects, I mentioned the academic building, the parking ramp, the, what, much-loved, used to be malign, now much-loved water tower next to Kinnick that has to be moved because the footprint lands on that. Moving that water tower is a $42 million project. It's no small task. It carries a million gallons of water. It's grandfathered since the 1950s. As soon as we replace it, it has to be 2 million. And we have to upgrade and grow the water storage we have on the east side at the same time by regulations. So, it's no small task to move that. The parking ramp is, I think, roughly 70 million in total, almost with roads, utilities, the academic building, you know, $400 to $500 million to enable the tower project. And then, Pauline, as you mentioned, once that tower project's done, now you go back into the hospital and modernize a hospital that has been put together in pieces since 1973 and made modern for the most important hospital in the state of Iowa.
Thank you for that. I was trying to give my colleagues a sense of scope compared to the projects that we authorize and that we see. So.
Big.
Yeah, thank you.
One quick question. The Sangsay, I don't think you mentioned Sangsay Gilmore, you know, the historic house on Market. What's the status there?
Yeah. So, I showed it on the inset project. It's one of those two properties on Clinton Street, across from the Tippi College of Business. It is directly across from the Tippi College of Business. It's the site that we purchased from the Gloria Day Church in anticipation of the Tippi College of Business project. The other structures on that site have been removed. The Sangsay House remains there. We did work with generosity and partnership with the city and your former mayor in a plan to see if we could relocate it. In fact, the city generously offered a small parking lot right across the street. I think some of the, it's not a registered home from a historic perspective. It's old and it's got a history. And some of that led to moving companies shying away from it. But ultimately, it was going to cost more than $2 million to relocate it without putting anything in it to make it work. We've had some, we've restored the Shambaw House, the Bowman House. When we did the Bowman House just up the street from that, because of what we have to do for those who will use it, we had to fit into it architecturally, historically, carefully. An elevator and other things that led to a simple renovation, we thought would be replacing windows, became over a million-dollar project. In this case, we don't have any programs that need or would fit in the home effectively. And at over $2 million, it didn't work for us to move it. We still endeavor to have it saved. What I would expect, we're talking to some folks. Not that we get people to approach us every once in a while, interested in it. And our objective would be to work with anybody, offer it at no cost, and probably help to defray some of the costs in moving, if someone will be willing to move it. It's been an interesting pathway for that house. There's no specific build date. One of the challenges in the city auditor, the county city auditor, in 1905, half of the house was built onto and was changed, to the point where the assessor said the building was built in 1905, not in the 1800s, because it was changed so much. That doesn't make it less historic or full of heritage. You bring up, or you point out, an important thing, and I talked about Halsey as well. We balance the issue of historic preservation constantly and carefully. We have invested more than anyone I know of in the preservation of history on this campus. But there comes a time for some buildings that don't stand that test of time. We don't take them lightly, but they do happen on occasion. When they have, we've been careful. I even think about the Saban School, working with the city, where Midwest One is now, in saving parts of those buildings, the way they don't build them anymore. And had somebody approached me, do you think you could save where it says Women's Gymnasium and put that into the landscape on that site and remember it? One, we always register it with video and photography and the histories. We've worked with the state archaeologist in doing some of that with us. And then, if we can, save parts of the building are an important part of that. But not always just saving. It's a good question. Thank you.
Well, thank you so much. You've given us a lot to think about. 10 years is a lot to do all of this work. We're looking forward to.
Plenty of time.
Yeah. Yeah. Well, and I guess I appreciate that 10-year outlook. I think oftentimes, you say you were approaching with single projects to the region, Board of Regents. And I think just having that bigger outlook is helpful.
It's helped the board. Our partnership with board and board office has been great because of this. They know what's coming. We had a freedom in communicating this. It did, and it does lead to reactions of, my gosh, that's a lot of work. And it is a lot of work, but it is over a 10-year period. And, you know, we look forward to always making sure that this campus works with the community and for our 30-plus thousand students.
Yep.
Couldn't be prouder to be here with you and in Iowa City. It's.
Well, we love the students, and we love the partnership that the city has with the University of Iowa. So, thank you for coming, and we'll see you around.
Absolutely. Anytime. I'm glad to come visit with you.
Yes. Thank you. Yes. Alrighty. Next item on our agenda is clarification. All righty. Next item on our agenda is clarification of agenda items.
Yeah, I would like to just mention that on the consent calendar, six-point L, if we could pull that from the consent calendar.
Sure. I would be in agreement with that. Yeah, so, all right. Any other thing from the formal agenda? Here and none. We're going to go over to information package item number three, July 22nd.
June.
June 22nd. July 6th, because June didn't have much. July 6th. So we have the IP4 memo from our city clerk for our joint entities meeting, which is going to be July 17th. And any other topics that we're thinking?
I just wanted to clarify that the request that Counselor Taylor had for emergency management, you want us to proceed with that? That was on the kind of smart 911 technology. I've confirmed that they're available to present that. Yeah, okay.
Perfect. Any other topics of interest that we want to present? I can't recall if we ever had Guide Link come and do the presentation. I know that we suggested it, and they weren't able to make it. It was the Corville meeting. And I can't remember if they were ever rescheduled, not suggested maybe for this meeting, but maybe we can look back through the, meet an agenda for a future meeting.
We have an MPO meeting tomorrow, and so hopefully we'll have some update. I don't know, John, if you have more information on the Bus Rapid Transit.
There will be an update.
There will be. So that might be good to share with that group, since it's a little broader than just the MPO. I imagine it'll be very brief.
Just clarification. Do you want MPO staff there to provide that update? Are you comfortable representing?
I think we can just report out.
Report out.
Well, Kent, I think, would Kent be attending that meeting, or could he attend that meeting? Or would you want to?
I could check his availability. Typically, staff would attend if there's an agenda item that pertains to them, but I'd have to check.
I would suggest either you or Kent. I know Kent has been discussing it with you.
Yeah.
I wanted to make, mention that I won't be at the meeting, neither will Mayor Protem Alter be at the meeting. So sometimes they have the city that put the item on the agenda kind of say something. So I don't know if Counselor Taylor, you wanted to kind of.
Lead into the.
At least introduce whomever is going to talk about the.
With the emergency management, yeah, sure.
Yeah, okay. And that will be the same thing with MPO. So you all can battle that out. Normally, they just list the city of Iowa City in the topic. So, yep, just introduce the person that's going to speak. All right. Any other thoughts for that meeting? Moving on to item number four, University of Iowa Student Government Updates, USG. Welcome.
Hi, Council. Well, there's not too much, but I figured I'd just kind of give you a little bit of our possible future events, because we kind of have our GR platform a little bit hammered out now. So it's just good to keep you guys in the loop. We were thinking of having a city council tour slash campus visit, similar to how the Board of Regents does it, but a little bit more low-key. It would just be really nice for a lot of, we're trying to make a new committee that is going to be working on more city initiatives. And we think it would be a great way to actually have them meet you guys, or at least some of you guys, and, you know, walk around campus or something like that. That's still really well in the works. We're still going to have a candidate form for those who are up for election this year. That'll be in the works as well from GR. Town Hall will probably happen again second semester. And then, of course, you're going to have this semester meetings with me and Matthew, hopefully. So that's all we really have. So thank you so much.
Great. Thank you.
Thank you. Item number five is council updates on assigned boards, commissions, and committees. We have nothing. All right, we're going to be adjourned until 6:00 PM.
It is 6:00 PM on this Tuesday, July 11, 2023, and I'm going to call the City of Iowa City. Formal meeting to order. Roll call, please.
Alter. Burgess.
Here.
Dunn.
Here.
Harmsen.
Here.
Taylor.
Here.
Teague.
Here.
Thomas.
Here.
Well, welcome everyone in person and everyone online. Happy to bet you're here with us today. We're going to go to item number two, which is proclamations. Two is Americans with Disabilities Act Awareness Day. Whereas the Americans with Disabilities Act was passed on July 26, 1990, to ensure the civil rights of persons with disabilities, and whereas July 26, 2023 marks the 33rd anniversary of the signing of the ADA, which expanded access and opportunities for people with disabilities. And whereas the ADA has done this by reducing barriers and changing perceptions and increasing full participation in community life. And whereas the full promise of the ADA will only be reached if we remain committed to continue our efforts to fully implement this act. And whereas the Iowa City affirms the principles of equality and inclusion for persons with disabilities as set forth and embodied in the ADA. And whereas the Iowa City government and residents are proud to recognize the accomplishments and contributions of our residents with disabilities. And whereas throughout the year and on the anniversary of the Americans with Disabilities Act, the City of Iowa City reaffirms principles of equality and inclusion for all community members and recommit to our efforts to full, to reach full ADA compliance. Now therefore I, Bruce Teague, Mayor of Iowa City, here do proclaim that July 26, 2023, as Americans with Disabilities Act Awareness Day, and call upon all community members to commemorate this day, celebrate the progress that has been made, and renew our commitment to the Americans with Disabilities Act. And to receive this is Meg, who is here with us now.
Hi, my name is Meg Stroback, and thank you for inviting me today to accept the proclamation in honor of 33 years of the ADA. It's a very big honor. I may not look it, but I am a person with multiple hidden or invisible disabilities, and the ADA has definitely helped me over my lifetime. And I also have been working with people with disabilities for the past 12 years and currently work at Access to Independence of the Eastern Iowa Corridor. Today I just want to honor and remember the disabled folks that we lost to the pandemic and welcome and embrace those who have become disabled as a result of the pandemic. The disability community will never forget the people we lost, and we are also here to support those who are newly disabled. Thank you.
Thank you. We're on to our consent agenda, which is items three through seven. I want to get a motion to approve, except we will remove item 6L for separate consideration. Can I get a motion, please?
So moved, Dunn.
Second, Thomas.
All right. Anyone from the public like to address this topic? If you're online, please raise your hand. Seeing no one in public or online. Counsel discussion. Roll call, please.
Thomas.
Yes.
Burgess.
Yes.
Dunn.
Yes.
Harmsen.
Yes.
Taylor.
Yes.
Teague.
Yes. Motion passed a six to zero. Can I get a motion to accept? Well, let's go to, let me get a motion to approve consent agenda, item 6L.
So moved.
Moved by Burgess.
Second.
Seconded by Harmsen. All right. Who seconded? You seconded?
If we did two, John, that's fine.
Well, no, I-
Harmsen, Harmsen seconded. Anyone from the public like to address item number 6L? Seeing no one in person or online, counsel discussion. And actually, before we go to counsel discussion, I'm going to invite staff maybe to comment on this.
Yeah, I'm going to go ahead and ask staff to come on up. Tyler's going to present to you a little bit on this, but just by way of background, this is a future CIP project that is in our budget. It's the reconstruction of North Gilbert Street. And we held a neighborhood meeting last fall, went through the scope of the improvements with the neighborhood. I think probably the reason it's being pulled is to discuss the sidewalk impact. Just to be clear, that's not what's being considered tonight, but we can provide the context on the design decision. So tonight Tyler's going to show you the areas of property acquisition and discuss the reason for those property acquisition needs. We expect to have more design information later on in the process. And of course, we always, we follow the Complete Streets policy in our design. We prepare for that, but ultimately your decision is going, you're going to have to decide on whether you want to pursue sidewalks on both sides of this corridor, one side of the corridor, none of the corridor. We'll present, we'll present you with the information on the impacts of that decision. And of course, you'll hear from neighbors at that time too. But for now, I'll turn it, I'll turn it over and we can get a little bit deeper into the weeds on this project with Tyler.
Welcome.
Thank you. See if I can get this to work here. Yeah, so this is for a future project that we're looking at construction in the year 2025. And this is for a section of North Gilbert Street that goes, includes the intersection with Brown Street and goes all the way up to Kimball Road.
Tyler, can you scoot a little closer to the mic or pull it up a little?
I'm sorry. I'll start again here. So this is, can you hear me? Okay, that sounds good. Okay, so this is for a future project that's planned for construction in the year 2025. And it's for a section of North Gilbert Street that includes the intersection with Brown Street, and will go all the way up north to Kimball Road. And with this project, we're looking at doing a new street there. So we need pavement. This will also include a sanitary sewer. This will include the sidewalks. It also includes new storm sewers. And then also as another item there, it'll also include utility undergrounding as part of this project. Now be getting those aerial lines on the poles there, be burying those underground. Okay, so this project's kind of involving a little bit- Okay, so this project's kind of involving a little bit with time here, and there was another smaller project that was to address a drainage issue at the corner of Gimble Road and North Gilbert Street, and that has since been lumped into this project. And with this project here, we're looking at doing a right-of-way acquisition for this little corner of 250 Kimball Road. And the idea behind this there is that over the years, we're trying to address a drainage issue where storm water will come down Kimball Road, flowing downhill, and will actually cross the intersection with North Gilbert Street, and would end up ponding where this sidewalk curb ramp is located. And you can kind of see with the photo down the left-hand corner there that there's that leftover rock from storm, that stormwater has since passed and has dried up. And we're looking at the opposite side, which would be in the other photo, on the right-hand side, it'd be a small spot just behind the utility pole there. And the idea behind this is there is that we like to put a curb along this location where the sidewalk is currently right now. And the idea is to help deflect some of that stormwater so we're not having the drainage issue at this location. And part of that there would involve moving the sidewalk over to the south. And on the west side of the intersection, there's enough room to put a sidewalk there at the, for the crossing, but on the east side, it's a little too congested, and that's where private property is located. So this right-of-way acquisition would be just for at where the crossings locate for the sidewalk, and then that sidewalk eventually tied back in to the current sidewalk that's along Gilbert, oh, sorry, Kimball Road. The other property acquisition is near the curve along North Gilbert Street, and this would be at the addresses of 828 North Gilbert Street and 908 North Gilbert Street. And this was something that was brought up at the last public meeting that we had back last November. And this was actually proposed by the current property owner of a way to, if we were to acquire some property there, we can actually move the curve of that street there and make it a little bit wider, so it's not so much of a sudden curve and a sudden drop around that corner. And right now, these are two photographs. The first one there at the lower left there is just a little bit further back to the south, and the other one's just around the curve. And it's just kind of a tight spot to be driving there. It's a little sharp, and there's that sun drop there. And with a little bit of property acquisition, which is shown in yellow there, would allow us to curve the road a little bit at that location so we can help ease that radius. And I'm going to go back two slides here just to show. So this was just the general area, and this would include... So they had those two right-of-way acquisitions there. The other item that would be covered by the agenda would be any temporary construction easement. So this would be for any work that would need to be, like on property, to remove a tie-in to a driveway or any kind of sidewalks that are connected to people's homes. This is basically just for us to get access in there to do the work, to tie in properly at a good location versus trying to makeshift somewhere else within the right-of-way. So that's, that would be the other item that's associated with that. Just to kind of talk a little bit about the project there and kind of getting the idea of the sidewalks. So right now, there's two sections of the right-of-way. The southern area has an 80-foot wide right-of-way, and the north side has a 50-foot right-of-way. And within this project corridor, there are items inside the right-of-way that may conflict with where we put sidewalks or where we put the street, or if there's any plantings or retaining walls that may conflict with how we construct the improvements. So these are just some examples here. For the most part, the top in the left are from the south side, and down the right-hand corner there is from the north side. And they're just kind of showing some examples, like we have staircases in the sidewalk that's there. There is retaining walls there near the road. And we brought about with the last public meetings that we talked about, the road whiffs, and currently, right now, it's 31 feet wide. And there was expressed interest from many people to maintain some parking on the street. I know that wasn't every single person agreed with that, but there was a number of people that did like to maintain some on-street parking. And that would, and when we construct a street, we can go down to a width of 26 feet, and that would still allow alternating day parking like it currently is right now. And that would give us a little more room in there to try to help get sidewalks in there. So at this time right now, we're still in the early preliminary stages of this project. There's no commitment on where sidewalks are going to be going at this point. But right now, we're looking at, for those two right-of-way acquisitions, the one is from another project that we're now including in this project to address a drainage issue. And the other one there is to extend that radius of the curb there. So that way, it's not so much of a sudden curve or sudden drop going down the street. And I had just one more slide here, it's a little bit more involved there, but this was one of the slides that we presented at the public meeting last November. And it just shows kind of a typical cross-section, and you can see the whiffs there. The one down at the bottom, the little cartoon drawing there, showing 80 feet wide right-of-way that's currently there. And then the upper one there showing the 50-foot right-of-way. And this is just one of those examples there that has a 26-foot wide street that would allow alternating day parking. That's the last slide that I have for this presentation. Is there any questions specifically?
Hearing none, thank you.
No.
All right, great. Counsel discussion.
Well, I just wanted to, to report to the council that I did contact some residents who live along North Gilbert after seeing this in the consent calendar and asked if they were aware of the fact that this resolution was going to be considered tonight, and they were not aware of it. And their understanding of how the process was going to proceed was that there was some time, they were not expecting it at this particular time that such a resolution would be considered. They asked if I would ask the council to defer on this item until our next meeting on August 1st and have it scheduled as a regular, formal agenda item so that we have an opportunity to hear from the neighbors as a part of this process at this point. And so that's, I'm just passing on their request. I do think, you know, this is, as we, as was indicated in the slides, this is a complex project. The, you know, the conditions along the edges of the roadway are variable and rather inconsistent in terms of the degree of accessibility and so forth. So I'm hoping that we can, you know, the neighbors will have a chance. I don't think anyone on council has actually heard from them to voice their concerns as we move forward with the project. I'm not, I'm not questioning the need for the project. Anyone who's ridden on North Gilbert knows it's probably one of the worst paved streets in Iowa City, or certainly second to none. And so the work needs to be done. I, you know, I just am hopeful that we can reach a, develop a process for this so that there is a sense of that the neighbors are being listened to. That's what I was hearing over the last couple of days was, you know, they're concerned that their concerns are not, not being heard. And so I, I'm offering, you know, I offered to them that I would, I would ask the council to consider deferring, so they had an opportunity at this point to make comment.
Question for...
Oh, go ahead, sorry.
A question for staff. Is there any immediate timeliness concern if we were to defer this to the next meeting?
So we're really early in the project process here, so we're not, we don't have any solid preliminary designs or anything like that at the moment. So, and we're doing construction, it's been already been postponed to 2025. So there's not an immediate need at this very moment in time here. This is just part of the process of going through the project.
If I can add to that, so the neighborhood meeting was November 16, 2022. So we just met with them in the fall, and what we communicated was the overall project intent. We got their feed, you know, we understood their feedback at the time, and we said, when we are at that design phase where we've got to make these critical decisions on what this looks like, we'll come back to you. Those are questions like, will it be sidewalks on both sides? Will the sidewalks need to be four feet or five feet? Will this retaining wall be impacted? All of those things. You can certainly defer this item, but I think you saw that the two pieces of acquisition that we're talking about don't really pertain to the concerns that the neighborhoods, the neighbor have. Actually, they're in response to concerns that we've heard from the neighbors on drainage issues and that, and that sharp turn. So I don't think delaying this project gets us to the point where we're ready for a design, a conversation on the design of the corridor. You certainly can. But I want to be clear, come August 1st, we're not going to have any more information to tell you what our recommendation is when it comes to the design of this project.
I think the design question aside, it would probably just be, you know, good, good trust building to bring people in and say, these are responses to your concerns, and you want to talk about it, go ahead. If not, you know, we do what we do personally. So I don't have a, I don't have a problem with a deferment.
Go ahead. Oh, thank you. Just, I'm looking at the resolution that's in front of us, and I appreciate the explanation on... That's what I was going to ask, is the timeframe and sort of where we are? Because I heard you say, Tyler, we're not, we're not at design yet where those critical decisions would be made. So what's in front of us tonight is the acquisition of property to be negotiated with the property owners. And if that can't happen for some reason, then we can proceed in the process of figuring out, you know, what adjustments we would make or how we would proceed with that. So I don't see this as an either/or, like an interfere. I don't, I don't see the deferment as necessary to engage the, the public input on those design questions. I think that that will happen and, you know, needs to happen. But right now, we're just enabling staff to say, we understand the overall reconstruction will require these right-of-way acquisitions, so please proceed with that. Is that a fair characterization of what we're doing?
Yeah, that's, that's correct. And the only other comment I would make about a possible deferral is I would want to make sure we don't send the public the wrong message about what's going to take place on August 1st. That is, staff is not going to be here prepared to, you know, lay out a design. They don't have it yet. And so certainly, they can listen to what the, you know, neighbors have to say, you know, on top of what was, whatever was said in the November meeting and so forth. But I just want to make sure that everyone's clear about what conversations could take place on August 1st and what are premature.
I understand that, and I understand your concern, Councilor Burgess. But I also agree with Councilor Dunn and Councilor Thomas. I'm still just a little confused by your, by your pictures. It just shows those two corners that are possible acquisitions. Are for certain, you need that acquired. But what I've been hearing is that towards Brown Street and along there, if indeed we decide on the sidewalks, some of that property is also going to be, have to be acquired from folks. And would that be a separate consideration for us? Or is this a blanket statement that whatever you need to acquisition to do this project, we're approving? I'm confused.
We are targeting the permanent acquisition of the two yellow hashed pieces in there. If you look at the right-of-way in this corridor, the right-of-way goes almost up to some, some folks' front doors. The issue of property acquisition to fit sidewalks won't be, won't be the challenge. It won't be a matter of, do we have the, the property to place sidewalks? It'll be probably more the council's will and the neighborhood's wanting of sidewalks in that corridor. So, correct me if I'm wrong, we don't anticipate any other property acquisition.
At this point, this is what we're looking at as for right-of-way acquisitions, correct?
I think, you know, given that we're talking about a very narrow bit of property acquisition for things like drainage and that it's already, like, the property owners of the involved property are going to be the ones that, like, we're not forcing this acquisition upon them. You know, we're not doing an eminent domain or anything like that. That sort of self-corrects. And I think the instinct to try and say, I agree with the instinct and the want to have the neighborhood talk about these design issues, this just doesn't seem like that's the spot for it to me. So, I mean, I don't think this, deferring that and then having them come in now prematurely, and then having to do that again when we get to the design phase and, you know, or even, I mean, certainly, that doesn't presuppose they can't send us their input now. And certainly, I'm sure people gave their input back just, you know, eight months ago. I don't see, I don't see the point of deferring for this narrow little agenda item.
If I can, I just want to clarify one point that you made, and that's the question about eminent domain and so forth. One of those two property parcels is on the property of a property owner who, the last time we did that project, we did have to condemn on. And so that very may, very well may happen again. In fact, I think it's probably likely. So I just want to make sure that council doesn't go in with an understanding that eminent domain won't be needed for this project. I suspect it will. So, you know, I, I, I understand, and I see the merits of the conversation here. Again, I think something that we need to consider here is, is public perception, and the public perception by a number of people in the community is that there is a lack of trust. And I think that this is a really great opportunity for council and for staff to say, hey, we heard your concerns. We're not at the design phase yet, but here's what we did to address your concerns that you shared at the meeting. Thank you for coming, please keep engaged. That's the kind of way that I'm thinking about it. I don't see anything bad about doing anything like that. I think that we need to do more of that, bring people here and say, we heard what you said, not just, here's an email, you know, we, that's not what this is about. And, you know, that could be seen as dismissive. We're doing our jobs, but, you know, we have a real opportunity to tell people, this is not the design phase, the proper time to come for that will be this, and this is actually really good because we take into account what you guys told us. So thank you for your input.
I think inviting people to a public meeting where we're not going to be talking about those things and saying, hey, come back later when we're talking about those things, really, I think that's just a really unsatisfactory engagement with us. And these business meetings that we have are not intended to, you know, enable the back and forth. I know how frustrating it is when people come to the podium and we just stare at them and say, thank you for your comments. I think that is maybe more of the issue, but this particular, this particular item, if people come back on the first and we have public input and further discussion, I think it's likely that there'll be some misunderstandings as to where we are in the process and what we're actually deciding. So I think, I think it makes sense to move forward with this and say, we know there will be public input actually about the design at the design phase, which could be a long time from now, given that this is a 2025 project.
Well, let me try to provide a little bit of focus on this. The, if you look at the language in the resolution, which I, which I did, you know, in terms of before contacting the neighbors, the resolution states very clearly that there would be new sidewalks on both sides of the street. Now, I'm hearing now from staff that that is not, in fact, what necessarily will happen, but that's not what the language in the resolution. The resolution is stating, I don't know how else to interpret that, but that there will be new sidewalks on both sides of the street. There's no, no way in which that's qualified. It's just simply, that's what you're going to get. And that's, that was a concern to the neighbors. So, so my feeling was that misunderstanding or confusion over that item could be something that could be addressed at the August 1st meeting, where there would, they would be here in person. They would no doubt ask for clarification on the question of this, this reference, the language in the, in the resolution stating new sidewalks both sides of the street. What exactly are we talking about? That could be clarified. I'm hearing now that there's actually, you know, that that's not necessarily going to translate to sidewalks running continuously from the beginning to the end of the project. But I'll just tell you, as, as Councilor Dunn just said, the correspondence I was getting from the neighbors was, I'm not sure if they're going to hear anything we have to say. So that, that's where they, I'm hearing from them at this point.
And I can explain the, the resolution item. When, anytime we start a project, we're going to have an intent on how we go about improving this road. going to have an intent on how we go about improving this road. We have an adopted complete streets policy that guides us to put sidewalks on both sides with exceptions. Your strategic plan tells us to prioritize pedestrians over adjacent property owners. It doesn't mean it's written in stone, but that's how we go about these design projects. We go and we look at that scenario, we evaluate those impacts, and ultimately, that's going to come to you to make that decision. Just like in that, in that, we talk about extensions of sewer and undergrounding utilities, there may be things that come up in the design process where we decide, you know what, we can't really underground these utilities. It's too expensive. There's not enough right-of-way to do that. Same with the utility improvements. We, we go in with the intent, and then we have to adjust as we study the corridor, we learn more, and we get that input. And ultimately, you've got to make the fine, the, the final decision. So I can see where that could be concerning language in, in the resolution. But, but that's the marching orders that the council and previous councils have given us on how to approach designs in, in, uh, street reconstruction.
And I think our experience shows that what we're doing here is authorizing, and that when, we've had exceptions in my tenure on council where we, we do make changes based on public input. So, but we wouldn't want to authorize only a limited aspect of the project if, in fact, in the end, that's what we all agree is needed and desired. So we're authorizing based on our policy, based on what we prioritize in our plans. And that's, that makes sense to me. There's nothing, you know, I don't think that that's hopefully not confusing to folks.
If I may add, we are planning on having at least one, if not two, more public meetings for the project. So there'll be more opportunities for engagement with each of the property owners to, you know, kind of tell them or work with them on the design and, and gather their input through the process. So we're, like I said, we're just really early on in the, in the design process and wanted to get this in front of you. So.
That's good to know. Thank you.
So I, I appreciate everybody's comments. What I, I think is unfortunate that we are talking about, if we don't allow this deferment, that people from the public might feel like they're not heard. But there is many ways for the public to engage and for us as counselors to reach out to the public for engagement. One-on-one opportunities for this, a particular item, I think would be great. So I, I don't want anyone thinking that if we don't defer that we're not open to hearing the public. There are so many different ways to hear from the public. And on the item that's before us, you know, I, I think it is safe that we're talking about two's particular items that is going to be a part of this, no matter what. And I feel like it's safe to move forward with that. With that being said, I also believe that if there's, you know, tonight is a public meeting where people could have came and gave public comment, even on a consent agenda. And I understand one person is out of town, and not saying that they should interrupt their vacation to get on Zoom and be included. But there are ways for the public to engage. This is a public meeting now, and there is no one here from the public. And I understand they say they weren't notified. And I, it's not, I'm not trying to debate on they should, that they really should be here right now. I think my point is, there is many ways to engage with the public on this item and in future things relating to this item. I don't believe that us, you know, deferring this item, for, the public can still come and share. And I think, as we just heard, there'll be some public engagement opportunities. Flip side, I need to just ask our attorney for some guidance on some procedural things. I know it's probably not the most proper way to do it, but we don't have seven individuals. We only have six. So I anticipate we'll get a, a motion for deferment. And let's say, for instance, it went three to three, well, that would fail.
That's correct.
And then the original motion is still on the floor.
Correct.
Which is the motion to approve. But if that is three to three.
It would not be approved.
It would not be approved. And then we would end up at, with this agenda in the future on our, well, what would happen? I mean, it's, it's not approved.
Right. That's a good question. Unlike a zoning process where you would, that would be considered a defeat and would, you would need to begin again with the whole process, that's, that's not this. We would need to return to this item, assuming that the council will is to actually move forward with this project at some later date. Presumably, we would want to have some discussion about how to get there. Maybe that's resolved by the return of Mayor Protem Alter, depending on how she felt about it. But yeah, it would return to this council probably one way or another unless council wanted to defeat the project.
Okay.
May I offer one suggestion?
Sure.
For, for your consideration? If we were to simply say in the resolution, new sidewalks, rather than new sidewalks both sides of the street, since it's, you know, it would just simply new sidewalks, not including both sides of the street, would that be acceptable?
Oh, I'm sorry. I wasn't sure if you're asking your fellow.
Well, I'm asking my fellow counselors, but, you know, that's.
I, I think that would kind of solve maybe the concern.
I think they would feel heard if we deleted the both sides piece of this, so that, you know, their concerns were reflected in the language of the resolution.
So, Counselor Thomas, you're suggesting to amend?
Amend the resolution to.
New sidewalks.
By deleting both sides of the street from the, the first paragraph.
I'd be agreeable to that.
Would you like to make, oh?
Sorry, just a clarification. John, would that be, would that preclude both sides of the street?
No.
Okay. All right.
I didn't, that's, that would be.
So the effect is the same. We just want to change the words.
Just to say new sidewalks, rather than new sidewalks both sides of the street.
Yeah. Yeah. Any comments? Is that all?
Fine.
That's acceptable?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. So.
No, I'm just waiting for the motion. I assume.
Okay.
A couple of times.
I would like to move that we revise the language to, to state new sidewalks without defining that as both sides of the street.
Second.
Moved by Thomas, seconded by Taylor. Roll call, please. Any discussion on that amendment to the language? Roll call, please.
Burgis?
Yes.
Dunn?
Yes.
Harmsen?
Yes.
Taylor?
Yes.
Teague?
Yes.
Thomas?
Yes.
Motion passed at six to zero. Can I get a motion to accept correspondence for item 6L?
So moved. Dunn.
Second, Taylor.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passed at six to zero. We are on to item, our community comment period, which is item number eight. And the public is, public comment is intended so that members of the public may be heard by council, because community comment is for items not properly noticed on the agenda. Council cannot engage in discussion or debate due to open meeting laws. So we invite the public to come up at this point, to share their comments. I wanted to see how many individuals want to speak during this period, if you can raise your hand. Okay? And I see no one online. All right. So we'll allow three minutes for each individual at this time. Welcome.
Thank you. I'm Joe Riley with the Iowa City Downtown District. Thank you for taking your time for public comment. I'm here on behalf of our Iowa City Downtown District, but also our Legislative Committee, to let you know that we support this proposed plan to purchase the former U.S. bank lot at 21 South Lynn Street.
Oh, I'm gonna, that's, that's on our agenda. So we'll have you come back up.
Thank you.
Thank you. Yep. Welcome.
Brandon Ross, Iowa City. Thank you, Mayor Teague, and Iowa City Council members. I want to come here just to speak to an issue that affects all of us and affects everybody in the world around. And it has to do with our U.S. military engagements in Ukraine, which, which is costing the world a lot of trouble right now to U.S. It's our taxpayer money. It's, we're sending $150 billion of weapons. There is climate change related. There's inflation. But maybe more important, there's 350,000 young Ukrainians who have died. That is kind of the upper end of the estimation. 350,000 Ukrainians have died. Most of them are young. From 17 to 59, Ukrainians by law have to be in the military and, and fight. And this is a whole lost generation of young people, young people who will not be there for Ukraine. It's World War I proportions of a disaster there. In the midst of this, our country, and I'm ashamed of our country, I'm a Democrat, but I'm ashamed of the Democratic Party, who just continues to beat the drums for war and comes up with slogans like, I stand with Ukraine, which is to say, I stand with the State Department, who is filled with neocons, working in our Biden administration, that wants a victory against Russia. The Ukrainians are just dying while we give them weapons. And I'm ashamed of my own party. I'm vastly ashamed of it. Our party has been an anti-war party at times. Right now, we're the most military party, and we're the most brutal party. Dr. Martin Luther King said, before he died tragically, that the U.S. is the most violent country in the world. I wish that this could be changed by now, but it is not. Anti-war activists in Ukraine are shut out or arrested. Zelensky has conceded, has canceled elections, so you cannot vote him out and get a peace candidate in. Zelensky has shut down five media operations and 11 opposition parties. Most of the world, most countries in the world, you will read, have supported negotiations between Russia and Ukraine. The one country that stands in the way of these negotiations is the United States. I am vastly ashamed of the Democratic Party. I believe that we need to call our White House and the Senate and Congress and demand negotiations and an end to this war.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Welcome. Please state your name and city you're from.
My name is Beth Foal, and I'm from Iowa City. Thank you very much for the ability to communicate in this forum. I'm a member of the City Park Pool Back to the Future Steering Committee, dedicated to working as a community with the leadership of City of Iowa City to create a pool that provides a space that is relevant and inclusive to all City of Iowa City community members. I just wanted to take a moment to recognize that there's several of my fellow committee members here with me today, and if they so choose, they could stand and just show support for my statement this evening. I first just want to thank you all who have met, emailed and conversed with many members of our group. It doesn't go unnoticed, and we greatly appreciate your ability to work with our community, to work together on the future of City Park Pool. Second is my understanding that there will be an open house meeting in the future, or maybe several meetings in the future, to discuss the future design of the pool. And I would like to suggest that these open house meetings function like a working meeting, where great breakout groups are paired with city staff and design staff, so that there's a facilitated open discussion regarding the design of the pool, to allow ideas to be discussed, to learn from each other, as well as provide city staff and design staff the ability to communicate and hear everything from all aspects of the community. And that's pretty much it. I just wanted to thank you for your time.
Great. Thank you. Anyone else like to address council at this time during public comment on things that are not on our agenda? San, great. Welcome. Please state your name and city you're from.
Hi there.
And there's also a sign in there.
I'll do that. My name is Dave Interril. I'm from here in Iowa City. I just became, I guess, associated by email with the group earlier today, so I don't know that I've been elevated to the Central Committee. But I just wanted to say, I just wanted to say that I support the goals. I think it's a great idea, and I really support the idea of the, the interactive iterative proposal to discuss these issues that she described. Thanks very much.
Thank you. Anyone else? Before we close, public comment. See, no one else jumping up? No. All right. We're gonna go to item number nine, nine, which is planning and zoning matters, 9A. This is the county conditional use permit for 4201 Nursery Lane Southeast. A letter of recommendation to the Johnson County Board of Adjustments for an application submitted for a conditional use permit to allow a home industry at 4201 Nursery Lane Southeast. Can I get a motion to approve, please?
So moved. Dunn.
Second, Thomas.
All right. And welcome, Danielle.
Thank you, Mayor, Council. Danielle Sitzman, Neighborhood and Development Services. No presentation tonight, just a brief statement. This agenda item is for a motion to approve sending a letter of recommendation to the Johnson County Board of Adjustment for the application that the mayor just introduced for a conditional use permit at 4201 Nursery Lane Southeast. That's approximately one mile south of Terry True Blood Recreation Area on South Gilbert or Sand Road Southeast. The subject property is located outside the corporate limits of the City of Iowa City, and it's also outside the city's growth boundary, but it is within the two-mile fringe area around Iowa City. So according to Johnson County's own zoning code, not our fringe area agreement, the county requires itself to allow the city time to review a conditional use permit when it's in the fringe area. The subject property does contain an existing single-family home and two warehouse buildings. The application to the county for their CUP is to convert one warehouse to a home industry. The proposed conversion is intended to serve the business included in your packet, which is Superstar Granite LLC's kitchen remodeling business. And the county's zoning rules would apply to the use and operation of this business. The proposed conversion would comply with the county's rules. Staff found that the proposed use would remain consistent with the intended development pattern for the future land use plan map that we maintain in our comprehensive plan and the policies in our fringe area agreement with the county. At their meeting on June 21st, by a vote of six to zero, the Planning and Zoning Commission concurred with staff's opinion and voted in support of the letter of recommendation, and no public comments been received on this item.
Great. Any questions for Danielle? Thank you. Anyone from the public like to discuss this topic? Council discussion. Roll call, please.
Dunn?
Yes.
Harmsen?
Yes.
Taylor?
Yes.
Teague?
Yes.
Thomas?
Yes.
Burgis?
Yes.
Motion passed at six to zero. Item number 10A is petty cabs and taxi cabs. Ordinance amending Title V entitled Businesses and License Regulations, Chapter Two entitled Taxi Cabs, to define petty cabs separately from taxi cabs. This is second consideration, and staff has requested expedited action.
Mayor, I move that the rule requiring that ordinances must be considered and voted on for passage at two council meetings prior to the meeting at which it is to be finally passed be suspended, that the second consideration and vote be waived, and that the ordinance be voted on for final passage at this time.
Moved by Taylor.
Second.
Seconded by Burgis. Anyone from the public like to address this topic? CNN 01, council discussion. Roll call, please.
Harmsen?
Yes.
Taylor?
Yes.
Teague?
Yes.
Thomas?
Yes.
Burgis?
Yes.
Dunn?
Yes.
Motion passed at six to zero. Could I get a motion to pass and adopt?
Second, yes, so moved.
Second, Taylor.
Moved by Dunn, seconded by Taylor. Roll call, please.
Taylor?
Yes.
Teague?
Yes.
Thomas?
Yes.
Burgis?
Yes.
Dunn?
Yes.
Harmsen?
Yes.
Motion passed at six to zero. Item number 10B is adopt code of ordinance, AKA city code, ordinance to adopt the code of ordinances of the City of Iowa City, Iowa 2023, AKA the city code. And this is first consideration. Can I get a motion, please?
So moved. Burgis.
Second, Thomas.
All right. And we have our city attorney, Eric.
Thank you, Council. I'll be very brief. This is one of those kind of routine matters that we just have to take care of every five years or so. The law, in my view, is a bit antiquated, as it refers to or envisions that everyone is referring to the paper codebook that is. is referring to the paper code book that is, you know, above my desk and Kelly's office and elsewhere, when of course, when the reality is that everyone's really referring to it online. That said, here we are. We need to adopt it at least every five years, and so I'd ask counsel to do so.
Any questions for Eric? Anyone from the public like to address this topic? CNNO1, in person or online, council discussion. Roll call, please.
Teague.
Yes.
Thomas.
Yes.
Burgess.
Yes.
Dunn.
Yes.
Harmsen.
Yes.
Taylor.
Yes.
Motion passes six to zero. 10C, urban chicken permits. Resolution adopting an urban chicken policy and rescinding resolution number 12533. Can I get a motion to approve, please?
So moved, Taylor.
Second, Dunn.
All right, and we're gonna go back to our staff, Eric Gores.
Thank you. A little more to say about this one, Mayor. So, as councils are aware, you had a work session where there was a discussion about what you'd like to see as a council, changed about the urban chicken ordinance and so forth, and you were able to reach a consensus and passed on that consensus to staff with directions to bring forth some changes in the policy. I'll note that the meat of the policy considerations that this council considered are actually contained in the resolution, the urban chicken policy resolution, as opposed to an ordinance. There is an ordinance that speaks to this, but it basically says that all the, you know, all the rules are going to be found in the resolution. So it is this amended resolution that's before you today. Again, the highlights are a change to neighbor, well, I'll say involvement. It went from neighbor consent being required to neighbor notification being suggested. The word neighborly was used in the discussions. So the language in the application or in the resolution that we've settled on is the applicants should notify their neighbors and so forth. To be clear, there is no requirement to do so. Next major point is allowance for urban chickens in multifamily residences, and so we adjusted the language to account for the possibility of housing cooperatives and condominiums in addition to more traditional multifamily residential situations in which there's maybe one landlord who controls the whole apartment complex. There is the allowance for staff discretion to allow a coop in a side yard if the property lacks a backyard, imagine corner lots. Again, discretion, we'd want to make sure there's a proper separation and, you know, screening and those kind of things, and enough space for that to make sense. We made the change from four hens allowed to six hens allowed, and that was the last kind of significant change that was brought forth. I'm aware that Chris is here. If you have any more specific questions about the implementation of this policy or anything having to do with the actual care of chickens, I will gladly defer to her. But do you have any questions for me?
The only question I have is, well, thanks for presenting this to counsel based on our conversation at work session. The only question I have is really related to the word "should" notify the neighbors. I think sometimes interpretation years down the road may get, you know, debated a bit. I wonder if we couldn't, you know, would consider changing the word to encourage something more of that nature than "should." I don't know if counsel is, like, encouraged to notify their neighbors or instead of the word "should."
I don't, yeah, everyone's looking at me. I don't really have any strong feelings about it, so if people are okay with that, I think it means effectively the same thing. So if that's what makes you comfortable going for it, I'm cool with it.
I think it'll resolve itself on the ground. I think it's sort of a gauging of the relationship you have with your neighbors, and I think people will have to make that decision on their own as to how they make that contact.
And we hope people don't have a foul relationship with their neighbors.
Thank you so much.
All right. We're gonna go to public comment, and then I will make a motion at that point to change the language. Anyone from the public like to address this topic at this time? Please come forth. CNNO1 in public, in person or online, council discussion.
Eric, you mentioned the last topic we talked about, that the law was sort of antiquated, and I kind of see that the previous original resolution about the chickens might be a little antiquated this time, too, because when it was originally written, there probably weren't so many, there weren't co-ops. The Mel or Richard one has since developed, and not as many condos either, and those kinds of folks are the ones that are coming and talking to us and saying, "We'd love to have chickens," and all of our neighbors, you know, want to, but we can't with the ordinance. So I just see it as a no-brainer, and that the language is a little more clear.
I just want to observe that if we'd been taking bets a decade ago on whether we would have zero public comment on expanding the chicken ordinance, it's, I would have lost that bet.
Yes.
We are blessed in this community.
Well, you know, this was first considered by the council shortly after I arrived in Iowa, and I have to say, I was kind of stunned by the response to this issue. You know, I quickly learned that it was easier to raise chickens in San Francisco than in Iowa City, and I thought, wow, I thought I had moved to the heartland. What's going on here? So it seemed to me a kind of a tempest in a teapot, and I'm really pleased to see that, you know, and thank Andrew Dunn for kind of leading this initiative and, you know, that we all agreed to the changes. You know, I'd certainly heard over the years from folks who were frustrated by the previous ordinance, so I'm happy to see that we've finally kind of brought things up to speed. And yeah, there aren't people out there anymore who are all concerned what, you know, that the sky would fall if we should allow chickens in Iowa City.
Yeah.
While I'm excited about this, I just wonder if any of my neighbors want to do it. We have to go up to the limit, so how many eggs will equal to like our, the financial limit that we can accept as counselors? But anyway.
Not very many, yeah.
Not very many, I know.
It's on you.
Yes. If no more comments, I want to make a motion to amend the resolution language from "should" to "are encouraged to notify." So.
So moved.
Moved by Taylor.
Second.
Seconded by Dunn. All right, roll call, please.
You don't have to have a roll call for a motion if you're not interested, but I'd be happy to roll call if you wish.
Oh.
It's just a motion, not a resolution, a voice vote would be fine.
All right. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes six to zero. Now we're going to vote on the resolution lang-
As amended.
Yeah, as amended. So, roll call, please.
Thomas.
Yes.
Burgess.
Yes.
Dunn.
Yes.
Harmsen.
Yes.
Taylor.
Yes.
Yes. Motion passes six to zero. Item 10D, Almost Paradise Tobacco Penalty, resolution assessing $1,500 in civil penalty and 30-day retail cigarette permit suspension against Almost Paradise. And could I get a motion to approve, please?
I'm here on behalf of Almost Paradise.
Yep, one second. Yep, I'll introduce you.
So moved.
Second.
Yep, moved by Burgess, seconded by Dunn, and we're gonna go to our staff, Eric Gores, on this matter.
Thank you. Not much to offer on this one either. It's, I believe that we, yes, we have one officer who's present, who, if there's going to be a contest as to this motion, then we would have Officer Michelle Schultz come forth and offer the evidence in support of the resolution. And then if this council finds that there was in fact a violation, then the language is "shall" impose the penalties that are listed in the resolution. And so I think that's where we are. So procedurally, I think we would start with Officer Schultz and then proceed with the perma-te if they wish.
Great. Officer Schultz, come on up. Welcome.
Thank you. A little short. Yeah, I, my name is Michelle Schultz, I'm an officer with the Iowa City Police Department. I was conducting tobacco compliance checks on the 13th of May. We also have an underage individual who, we don't disclose their name, obviously, but we give them strict instructions about what we're looking for. So they go into an establishment that sells nicotine products if, and ask to purchase something. If the clerk asks how old they are, they are not to lie, they tell exactly how old they are, and everybody who does that is underage, under 21. If they ask for an ID, they give them their real ID, which indicates that they are under 21. And if the clerk tells them that they're not to, that they're not going to sell nicotine products to them, they just walk out, and that establishment has obviously passed the check. In this instance, the undisclosed individual walked into Almost Paradise, requested a nicotine product, and was able to purchase that. We had audio and video, this person was fitted with audio and video recording of that, and so we were able to verify who they spoke to, what happened during that exchange. And we cited the clerk for that citation, so, and it looks like the clerk, that person entered a guilty plea for the citation on the sixth, or the eighth of June.
Any questions? Thank you so much. All right. And then I'm gonna invite Almost Paradise representative up to speak at this time.
Thank you.
Welcome.
Thank you. My name is Shannon Walsh, I'm an attorney in Iowa City, and I represent the owners of Almost Paradise and several other businesses that they own. And I'm aware of the code, and I know that his options are limited, but he wanted me to come today and express his frustration. But first of all, I would like to say that, from what I read of the code, he can strike one of his tickets if they've, if the employees have gone through a training program, the retailer training program, Iowa Pledge, and he would invoke that right now for this ticket. But he just feels that this is an extremely unfair process. He, you know, he trains his clientele, he has signs all over the store, "Must be 21 to enter to purchase anything." He tries to very clearly, and I have had discussions with his employees about, you cannot let anyone under 21 in the store, and you must check everyone's ID, even if it's your mother, you check her ID. And they're like, oh, of course we do, we do. So, you know, he's got this young guy who works there, and he got sloppy, and he got this ticket. And it has happened before, but, you know, we're talking about this man's livelihood plus the livelihood of at least 10 employees in jeopardy because one young man made a mistake and sold, and I, you know, I have children, I don't want my kids smoking or anything else of that nature. But he's just very concerned, he feels a little bit singled out. He owns other stores of the same nature, one in Coralville, one in Des Moines, one in Moline, one in Davenport, and the Iowa City store is always the store that's the problem, that they check and they find something, and it's, you know, he just feels like he's being singled out to some extent. But, I mean, I've read the case law, I've read the statute, I know that your hands are tied mostly, but he wanted me to express his frustration. And, you know, the downtown and all retail is suffering right now. It's very grim. I mean, Iowa City Marketplace or Sycamore Mall is on the auction block for the second time. The downtown mall is basically not a mall. Coralville Mall is desperate for retailers. Stores are closed all over the place. I spent 17 years in the East Coast Washington DC neighborhood as a commercial real estate agent and developer, and this market is bad, and I've never seen it worse. So, you know, he's bringing business to Iowa City. He's opening another store on the Ped Mall and another store on the same street as Almost Paradise. So he's bringing businesses to town. He's paying taxes, he's being a good citizen, he's raising a family in the community, and he's just frustrated, and he wanted me to express that to you. And if, you know, this particular ticket isn't struck because of the training option, he intends to appeal it all the way up. All the way up. So we'll see. But that's why I'm here, is to just let you know that he's not trying to entice kids into buying cigarettes or tobacco products or vape or any of that nature. He's just a businessman who's trying to make a living and employ people, and he's very strict about it. If you go to the store, and I invite you all to go, he's got signs all over the place saying, "You must be 21," right on the front door, big letters, "You must be 21 to enter." So, you know, he can't help but feel entrapped to some extent. And I know that in the code, that's not a thing, but he feels strongly about it, so that's why I'm here.
Thank you.
Ms. Walsh, I have just one clarifying question. You mentioned that you, your client wished to invoke the "I pledge" thing. Have you brought the employee in question certificate of completion?
I have one, but I don't think it's, which, I'm not sure which employee it was.
Looks like Steve Tembe, I may be mispronouncing this person's name.
I don't think I have his, but I know it exists because I can get it.
Well, this would be the time.
I know it would have been.
Right, actually, when we sent out our letter, that probably would have been the time, but certainly no later than tonight. And this was this clerk's second offense this calendar year, I noted. I don't know if he completed it after the first time, or...
That I can't answer.
Okay.
But I know that he has, before he'll hire anybody, they have to finish this course. And, you know, so I don't know why that kid is working there anymore, so I don't know why. He was sloppy, but some people have theories about what he's up to. But...
Thank you. Any questions from counsel? Thank you.
Oh, I'm sorry, I have a question for our attorney.
Okay.
Laura.
Yep, thank you. You can, yeah.
So, one, I have a question, Eric, if I bring, if I can get him to bring it over.
At this point, the counsel is gonna have to have the discussion.
Okay.
Yep, on that. Thank you.
Sure.
Counselor Burgess.
Does the guilty plea by the clerk inform our finding of the violation?
Right, and I'm not hearing that there's any contest that the illegal sale took place. The employee, as Officer Schultz mentioned, pled guilty on June 6 of this year to the offense. I think that's pretty dispositive.
Thank you.
Anyone from the public like to address this topic? CNNO1 in person or online, council discussion.
As a longtime healthcare professional, I'm sorry, but smoking, I've seen the effects of it, the negative effects of it, it's terrible. And I've also seen in this community an increasing use by young teens, young kids, and the vaping. And I was just told recently that you've got to do something about this vaping in this town, and the vaping by the young children. And if we encourage this kind of thing, the sale, when this person knows that they're not supposed to do that, I think, you know, there has to be some consequences and infractions. And I think, I think we're very transparent on the fact that you just can't do that. I mean, I wouldn't, I'd like to see it not sold even to over 21, but especially the under 21s. That's just not right, and not to ask for ID to verify that. Again, I, no, I just, I'm in favor of imposing this penalty.
Roll call, please.
Burgess.
Yes.
Dunn.
Yes.
Yes.
Harmson?
Yes.
Taylor?
Yes.
Teague?
Yes.
Thomas?
Yes.
Motion passes six to zero. Item number 10E is real estate purchase, 21 South Lynn Street. Resolution approving a real estate sale agreement for acquisition of 21 South Lynn Street, Iowa City. And can I get a motion to approve?
Second. Burgess.
All right. And we're going to invite our city manager, Jeff Ruin.
Thank you, Mayor and counsel. So tonight, we're talking about the acquisition of the northwest corner of Lynn and Washington Street, 21 South Lynn, commonly referred to as the former US Bank lot. Ironically, the site of Iowa City's original city hall, built in 1881, and served that purpose until it was demolished in 1962, I believe. So, coming back full circle here with this acquisition. The property is currently owned by CA Ventures. I'll probably refer to them as CA throughout my comments here. CA bought the property from US Bank in 2021 for 3.8 million. They promptly demolished the one-story bank building. You may recall there was a drive-through bank building and a large surface parking lot. They promptly demolished the building and tore out the pavement, and it's currently fenced off and has been in that condition for quite some time. CA's intention was to build student-oriented housing in that location. CA is the owner of The Rise at Riverfront Crossing. They also developed The Latitude in Coralville's River Landing, which has since sold and rebranded. But they went through the process of getting a site plan approved by city staff. The property is already zoned CB10, so there was no council consideration, but they advanced the, the project all the way to the building permit stage, so put quite a bit of time and energy into developing their concept. Earlier this year, we began, staff began fielding inquiries from folks that were interested in potentially buying the property from CA, and that was much to our surprise. But as we started to talk with folks, we, we heard a lot of interest for similar student-oriented housing. We also started to get a lot of questions about enlarging the site through the acquisition of the properties along Washington Street immediately to the west there. And that's something that CA had originally approached us about when they were buying the site in, in 2021. Given the current market conditions, I think it's safe to say that student-oriented housing would likely be the resulting development, should it, should it go to sale on the private market, should the city not pursue this acquisition. As counsel knows, we put quite a bit of energy into creating opportunities for student-oriented housing in our Riverfront Crossings district over the past decade. And as a reminder, when we encourage that development in the Riverfront Crossing, it also kicks in our affordable housing efforts, where that is not the case in our CB10 zoning district. We've seen quite a bit of student housing built in Riverfront Crossing, so that supply of student-oriented housing continues to grow. We have two very significant projects under construction right now, on South Dubuque and Riverfront Crossings, and on Myrtle and Riverside in the Riverfront Crossings district. Over the past decade and a half, we've also been very intentional about our efforts to diversify the types of uses downtown, from zoning restrictions on, on drinking establishments to different grant programs, to invest in facades and, and encourage different uses. We've done quite a bit to diversify uses, allowing for more retail opportunities, office opportunities, while maintaining a strong restaurant and nightlife scene. We've also invested quite heavily in entertainment, arts and culture types of venues to ensure that downtown remains a place for both town and gown, and is appealing to, to everybody throughout the community. So through the acquisition of 21 South Lynn, we can work to identify the exact uses that we would like to see on that property. We can identify some high-level goals and, and partner with the private sector to develop that in a way that's going to add some long-term stability and vibrancy to downtown Iowa City. We do not have plans for this property, I want to be clear about that. We do not have any plans. We don't have any preconceived notions on what this may be. We just have confidence as a staff, and hope you, hope you share that, that we can facilitate and guide development that's in the best long-term interest for Iowa City. We do have a track record that, that I think we can lean on, most recently with the Chauncey property, in which the city had publicly-owned property. We partnered with the, the private sector, and we identified uses that we'd like to see, and, and we were able to achieve that. We now have state-of-the-art entertainment, we have additional hotel rooms, we have office space, public housing, market-rate housing, all in that building. And that started with the city controlling that property and articulating our goals for that site. You can go back to the parking lot that used to be across from the library, that now holds the Bread Garden Market and Hotel Vetro, and the same story exists there, with the city really guiding that development, thinking strategically about what uses could complement the existing uses downtown and strengthen the entire downtown area for everybody. Should the counsel approve the purchase agreement, we would likely close sometime in mid to late August. And my suggestion would be that, that we not be in a rush to, to go about developing this site. I think we first probably need to look back and study the processes that we employed for, say, the Chauncey, and decide if that's the same process, or if we want to make adoptions to that process when it comes to this property. But we, we would likely, at our recommendation, likely start the goal-setting for the redevelopment of this process in 2024. Obviously, we have a council election coming up, we have four seats that, that are going to be up, and I think it's important that we, we start with the, with that future council on that goal-setting process. If we follow that trajectory, we might be drafting an RFP in the summer or fall of next year. And even from that stage, we could be looking at another year or two before you really get to a, a, a final concept that, where a shovel could be put in the ground. So this is definitely a long-term effort. I think the Chauncey was probably eight or nine years from, from start to finish, and we should expect that this one could be the same going forward here. The purchase price is 4.55 million. It's an approximate 20% increase over what CA paid in 2021. As we know, property values have increased quite considerably throughout the community, also in downtown Iowa City. It's, again, a 20% increase over what they paid. They also put considerable expenditure into demolishing the site, preparing the site, doing environmental studies. A lot of those things that will save the future owner some costs going forward. So I think the 4.55 is certainly a fair price. I think our ability to close quickly actually allows us to secure this property at a bit of a discount, as opposed to what it might get on the private market with a longer due diligence period. I'm happy to answer any questions that you have, but in summary, this is a strategic acquisition that I think we can take and entrust in ourselves, in the process, and the public input that we will get, to create a, a product that otherwise would not be built in Iowa City, and would certainly be in the best long-term interest of our community.
Real quick clarification. If we were to approve this tonight, then some of those environmental studies and other studies you said that the current owners have done, that would, those would come to us, and then we would have a period of time to review those, and we would still have an out, should those become less than satisfactory?
Right. The purchase agreement calls for those documents to come to us by tomorrow, and then the 15-day due diligence period would allow us to review those materials, see if we've got any concerns, see if there's any surprises there, and so forth. And if we are shocked by what we see, we can walk away.
Thank you.
Any other questions for staff? Anyone from the public like to address this topic? Welcome.
Yep, Joe Riley with the Iowa City Downtown District. Thank you for taking comment on this. I'm here on behalf of the Iowa City Downtown District and our Legislative Committee to let you know we support this proposed plan to purchase this plot of land. Having control over this land, as Jeff said, can ensure requests for proposals for future redevelopment of the site, can take into consideration the needs of the community as well as the market. A future council, a future council will be able to incentivize development that strikes a balance with the allowable density of downtown, while contributing to the streetscape character. This also creates an opportunity to identify developments that more closely align with the retail, residential, and community space needs in downtown. We would liken this process to similar developments, development incentives that spoke to community input, like the Tailwinds Project on the 100 block of East College Street, and also the Chauncey Tower that's here across the street from City Hall. Structures like these more closely align with the Iowa City Downtown District's advocacy, and this strategic purchase of land will help shape the face of downtown for decades to come. Thank you.
Thank you. And by the way, that's our nighttime mayor. Welcome.
Thank you. Katie Gerlach, Director of Better Together 2030. Thanks for your time this evening. As Executive Director of Better Together 2030, I'm here to register support of the City of Iowa City's purchase of 21 South Lynn Street, as described this evening, and for the reasons stated by city staff. This purchase will allow the city to play a lead role in the redevelopment of this critical property, and by taking this proactive approach, our community can ensure that the future use of this site aligns with our long-term goals, fostering stability and vibrancy throughout our community. Without the city's involvement, market, market conditions will not produce a development that meets our vision, and we risk losing historic properties that contribute to the character and diversity of our central business district. The City of Iowa City's purchase of 21 South Lynn Street using those general funds is a step towards realizing the goals outlined in the Better Together 2030 All-In Vision Plan. The strategic plan emphasizes the importance of creating a vibrant and inclusive community, and the acquisition of this property aligns perfectly with that vision, and allows Iowa City residents to take an important role in the redevelopment of this critical property, ensuring that it aligns with our long-term goals, and adds considerable value to the community as outlined in the city's strategic plan as well. The Better Together 2030 All-In Vision Plan recognizes the need for collaboration between the public and private sectors in creating projects that benefit the community. Overall, the city's purchase of 21 South Lynn Street using general funds is a strategic decision that aligns with the goals and visions outlined, and it presents an opportunity to create a vibrant, inclusive community while ensuring responsible redevelopment and long-term benefits for our residents. Thank you.
My name is Karen Cubby. I live in Iowa City, and I am really happy this is happening. I have spent countless hours sitting on the curb, looking at this property before it was demolished, and am really intimate with this area. Having community guidance for the redevelopment here is very exciting to me. It's one of the last infill properties in downtown Iowa City, and so what happens here is really critical. So I'm grateful that, and I hope that this will be a unanimous and positive vote. There are so many things that I hope will happen with this project, being able to talk about long-term residents in the, in terms of housing, so I hope there's housing involved, looking at affordable housing, looking at the materials that are being used to build this building, and long-term energy efficiency goals and other sustainability factors. The historic preservation aspect of it for me is really important, because when you really look at where it is, and look on every side of this property, there are historic properties that were contributing, properties for the new historic, downtown historic district that the city applied to the Fed's form and was approved. So, taking that into consideration is really critical. And then there'll be all kinds of heights discussions, I'm sure, about this. And I'm hoping that if it is a taller building that was proposed by CA, a 12- or 13-story building, that design factors will be part of it to help mitigate the experience on the street from a tall building. So, the other thing that I briefly want to mention is that, that property looked really bad when people came to town for orientation and as new students. So I'm hoping it will be maintained by the city in this longer interim period. Maybe it could be maintained in a way that there could be short-term programming that happens in that space, that we could talk to the downtown district about. So what are the opportunities in the interim for this space? I don't know, there might be too much money, but to look at it and at least have it presentable. And the only caution I have about the process of a public-private partnership is, with the Chauncey, there was a process outlined, and there was a matrix that counsel was going to use, that they didn't end up using. And so I hope if you have a process outlined for the community, that you follow it all the way through, because it does break trust with the community, or at least to explain why you may use a different process before the night of the meeting would be awesome. So, make this happen, and I, I'm happy. Thanks.
Thank you. Welcome.
Good evening. I'm Nancy Byrd. I'm with the merged entity of the Iowa City Area Development Group and the Iowa City Area Business Partnership. We will have a new name soon that will be much shorter, and I'll be happy to say it. But thank you for having a public comment on this tonight. I don't want to repeat what my colleagues have said, but we're really pleased that staff has brought this forward as a really great opportunity for downtown Iowa City and the region as a whole. I think a lot of people don't fully understand the delicate ecosystem that is downtown, with the juxtaposition of the old historic buildings and what new buildings can bring to them to add value, and clients, and all the things for even the historic properties. So, over the course of time, when some of these properties are left vacant, or for the private market to take control of them, oftentimes you get outside investors, they don't fully understand the climate on the ground or the regulatory course, and they can stall out and sit for a very long time, which is hard on everybody, when this is like, you know, premium property that can be used for the community good. So, you have the, the support of our organization, and I'm sure that there'll be lots of conversations about this moving forward. A couple things, as you go through your goal-setting to consider, is that where possible, it would be great if you could use, you know, I know it's not always possible, but to focus on local developers and local architects. I think downtown Iowa City is a center of design excellence. There's multiple firms and engineers that are really doing remarkable things, not only in Iowa City, but in the state and in the, in the entire country. So tapping into those resources will be exciting. Then also, just the opportunity to invite a number of uses into the mix, whether it's personal use or professional use, which I think there's a lot of opportunity out there even still, for even those remote or office users that really want to be downtown and headquarter downtown, as well as the ground floor, which I think over the course of time, we have a lot of cultural venues downtown, and they've been very exciting uses. The retail segment still needs a lot of support and work, and I think that's a great place to put some of the efforts for the ground floor. In the past, working with CA in the past, they had devoted some component of the ground floor. At that time, the conversation was that they would devote some space for independent retail, which would really be great, too. So, we'd love to be a partner with you and explore some of the, the goals that you'll be setting for the project, and I really hope that you approve this unanimously tonight. And you have a really great partner with the downtown district, you know, they really are the voice of the downtown, and they are there for all the things that the community, I think, will find exciting as well. So, I encourage you to look at their website and all the reports that they've already done as you go through your goal-setting. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else like to address this topic? Seeing no one in person or online, counsel discussion.
I'm very much in favor of this. I've got four reasons, and I wrote them down. So, you know, the, the first one is the community-focused development. What's already been touched on today, we can make sure that this project does good things for the people that are on the ground here in Iowa City. Second is it's timely. You know, things are not going to be on the market forever. Third is it's a solid investment. One of the discussions that has yet to come up, and I'm, I'm sure will be, is if, even if we go into this with the best of intentions, and, and things that end up not working out, or there's not the money, or there's not the political will, this is still an asset that we can then, you know, go back and we can sell it, and we can get the money of the taxpayers back. So, I think it's low-risk. I think it's great for the community. And my final reason is, it's a, it's a continued precedence of counsel using our community's shared capital for common good, which is something that I am very thankful that we are, we are hopefully going to do today, thankful for staff giving us the, the opportunity to do, and something that I'd like to see more of. So, yeah, I'll be voting to support this.
I agree with Counselor Dunn. I don't really have anything to add. I, I think the... I, I think the, the community aspect is really critical and I think, you know, apropos some of our other discussions, it's, it's helpful to know from the very beginning that the entire process will be, will have many, many opportunities for people to come and let us know what they think and to prioritize and that kind of thing. So as, as long as we are led by our strategic plan and, you know, hear all of that input, I'm, I just think that there's incredible opportunities for what could happen in that space and I'm grateful that this was brought forward so that we can take that proactive approach and seize the opportunity.
I, I too am quite pleased with where we are at this moment and, and I do recall, and maybe Nancy, you can remember, remember exactly when you and I were walking around in the downtown and I kind of posed the question to you of perhaps the city should acquire this site because it had been sitting vacant for so long. And I think you said, well, I'll look into the status and it was, then, then I learned that CA Ventures had made an offer on the property. So that was a very bad day for me because of, as we know, the, you know, case of the market directing development in a, in a, in a manner which was not going to be consistent with a community vision on arguably one of the most important properties in the downtown. So the fact that we had a chance to purchase it, you know, I'm extremely grateful that, you know, we have it and optimistic that, you know, the community values will be revealed as we go through the process. And there was some, I think, some good comments that we heard from you all tonight on what some of the aspects of that might be. But again, it's, I think, a great day. I'm quite happy to see the city being more proactive and not, not simply expecting or relying that, you know, the private markets will deliver, deliver projects that will be supported by the community as a whole. So I'm, I, I think we really, you know, we did the right thing and, you know, I'm confident that we'll be able to, to realize the vision for the property.
So normally I say begin with the end in mind and that, that often means renderings, you know, we need to see exactly what's going to be happening, but that is not the case here. But, but as I think about, you know, begin with the end in mind, I still think that we have that here. When we think about our strategic values and strategic plan for the, for the city, the opportunity to bring the community together to dream and of something that would really impact the lives here, it's in the downtown, which is the heart of our, well, it's the living room of our community, as often said by Nancy Byrd, but it is the living room of our community and I, I think it's a great asset that we will have. We are using our general fund reserves, which will still keep us within that 25 to 35% range of revenues that we want to maintain. So I feel comfortable moving forward with this and so I'll be supporting it tonight. Roll call please.
Can we say one more thing?
Yes.
Yes. I, I just really want to reiterate the, the appreciation for, for staff in this project, spearheading this, bringing this to us and, and being that proactive. This is not something that we could do and probably did not necessarily come to top of mind for some of us. So just want to make sure that that is, is really hammered in there. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Roll call.
Burgess.
Yes.
Dunn.
Yes.
Harmson.
Yes.
Taylor.
Yes.
Teague.
Yes.
Thomas.
Yes.
Motion passes six to zero. We are on to council appointments. Item 11A, Ad Hoc Truth and Reconciliation Commission. We have, and tonight we have three different commissions that we're going to be discussing. So what we normally do is just, we'll go through each one of them and kind of determine who we'll have as our person. So we'll start with the Ad Hoc Truth and Reconciliation Commission. So there are two vacancies to fill an expired term from appointment date to December 31st, 2024.
Two, two male requirement, I believe.
Mm-hmm.
Mr. Mayor, oh, go ahead.
Oh, go right, yeah.
I was just going to say to launch into this, it is, there are, it's a two male requirement. I think there's only two males that have submitted. I'm sort of torn on this and I'd love to hear from the rest of my, my fellow council members. On the one hand, this is a commission that we want to get things done and, you know, it's on a clock, you know, you know, so want them to be able to get quorum. On the other hand, it is, you know, we do want commission members, even new commission members that, that seem to be sort of up to speed a little bit more. And with just two people to choose from, I'm worried that we don't have a big enough candidate pool for these two spots to really make the best choices. So I'm a little split on this and so I was kind of wondering what my fellow counselors were feeling and if, and if maybe they also feel a little bit like we maybe want to send this back out for more, give it more time, like reopen the, the submission date for applicants. Just, just a thought to throw out there, was wondering if anybody else felt that way.
I wonder if we can just ask if we were to redo this, do we open it back up for application? Do we have a time requirement? Typically it's 30-day. We can do another two-week. I don't know if council is thinking...
We've done it before, but I can't remember how we did it before since I've been on council.
And would that change, there's usually a date where we don't have to consider male versus female? Would, would that apply then too? We could do either male or female?
Yeah.
Well, that part would not apply because that's if you can't find any candidates who are available and as Counselor Harmson mentioned, there are two that would...
Then you have to do the two male. Okay.
Yeah.
Typically, we would just do open until filled. And if you had a, a date in mind that you wanted to, to look at appointments again, to put it back on the agenda, we could do that.
If we were going to be looking at the August 1st meeting, what would, what would the actual window for applications be then?
It's Tuesday before the Thursday packet, so...
So we have three weeks.
Okay.
Oh, do we?
Could be.
No.
It'd be two weeks. It'd be the 25th.
Right, two weeks.
For a deadline.
Yeah.
Kind of promotion did we do for these openings? Do we know?
We do the paper, they do social media, we do our website, the agenda.
I always see the HRC openings, but none of the other ones. I don't know.
I'm sorry, I didn't hear you, Laura.
Oh, I said, I always see the HRC openings, but none of the other commissions. Maybe they do separate social media or something.
Stephanie always does a great job of, of trying to get this word out. So promoted through City Channel 4, Twitter, posted in public facilities, the Lens Newsletter, Facebook, LinkedIn, Nextdoor, and an official news release. And then we always encourage staff and commissioners to do the word-of-mouth advertisement as well.
I, I too had some concerns about the limited number of male applicants and I appreciate your comments, Mr. Harmson, but looking at the date, it's, it's an unexpired term that expires, oh, oh, I'm sorry, it's December 24th. I was thinking it was 2023. If it's 2023, that's a very short term, so never mind.
I'm, I'm in favor of opening it back up. The question becomes, do we only have two weeks for people to apply or do we at least go four weeks for people to apply? I mean, we can, we have the option of until filled, but we have to have it on our agenda.
I, I think, I think you're right. I think we need to put a time limit on it. Again, I'm sensitive to the fact that we need a TRC that can reach quorum and, you know, as long as we have two unfilled seats, we make that more difficult for them. But I think two weeks is awful quick turnaround. I think, I don't know, what, does anybody else think? Does anybody think two weeks is too quick? Four might be better? And then we take this up in the middle August meeting?
Is there, I have a, I was going to ask a question to Redmond, I'll let him finish.
Sorry, if I was jumping ahead there.
No, I was just going to ask Redmond, have they started that work for the three-month time that like, so there's the seven-month contract with the facilitator and I know the last sort of I saw, they hadn't started that first chunk yet. Have they begun that work?
Well, so it depends how you look at it. So there, there was some, some holdup on getting some of the contractors, getting some of the paperwork in. So all that has been addressed, but the last meeting, they weren't able to have quorum. So we, we do expect that there's some vacations and everything that, that should be kind of played out so that the next meeting, we should expect quorum. And then the commission can actually say, yes, we're, we're ready to move forward. So the contractors want to start in July. They haven't really gotten the official start as of yet, but we do expect that the first kickoff meetings will be the first of August, the first week of August. So Thinkpeace being the group that's going to start the training of the, of the commission, that's supposed to start the first, first week of August. So there's, there's that, but I think the commission does know that, that's kind of a big piece starting pin and so we, we suspect we should have quorum there, but it is pretty tight with the vacancies.
Yeah, we saw in their meeting, meeting minutes that Thinkpeace is going to be doing something, I believe, as early as the 4th. And that's going to be some of, I think, five-hour trainings. I think there is an urgency here. So I, I, I almost feel like we need to suggest August 1st, well, have August 1st get back on our agenda and try to do what we can to get the word out. And if we find, you know, in that moment that we still aren't comfortable, then we're not comfortable.
That makes sense.
Yeah. All right. So we're going to defer this, open it back up and then city clerk will put it back on our agenda. All right, we're going to move on to the next. And I, I think we're, we don't really need a vote on that. I mean, that's just a...
Yeah, I think that's fine.
Yeah. We're going to move on to item number 11B, Historic Preservation Commission Northside. This is one vacancy to fill a three-year term, July 1st, 2023 through June 30th, 2026. And this is no gender requirement.
I think there's only one applicant for this tonight.
And she's already serving.
She's finishing her term.
And our people, yeah.
Yep, sounds good.
The, the districts are a little bit hard.
The end. Toman, Toman?
Yeah, so it looks unanimous to reappoint Deanna Toman. All right, we're going to move on to item number 11C, Human Rights Commission. One vacancy to fill an unexpired term upon appointment through December 31st, 2025. And we have one male requirement here.
Just to launch the discussion, I had, there were two names that jumped out at me. By the way, I should have said this before, I mean, like on all of these, again, always impressed by the people that are willing to serve the community, by the qualities of those people that willing to serve the community. Should probably make clear that for the last, the, the TRC was not meant to be a slam or a slight against the two male candidates. It just feels like for that position, I feel like we should have a few more to, just more to choose from for something like that with the work that has to be done. HRC, same thing, number of really good candidates. Two that I would like to throw out there for consideration that jumped out to me especially out of, of an outstanding field. TJ Dedu Norris, if I pronounced that correctly, was impressed by some of their art practice and teaching. Oh, I thought those were, those jumped off the page at me a little bit.
I thought that was a female.
And then, I think that's male candidate, yes? No.
I thought it was a female.
No, my, my apologies. There were so, 20 candidates, so, so that, that would be...
It was a long last year.
And then, you know, Mark Priest, who has been on the commission before, is a retired pastor and, you know, I think is devoted to this work and in fact, I was, I'll talk about this more later perhaps, but was impressed and I noticed Mark's presence today at the state capitol to protest a degradation of human rights in Iowa. And so, so that, I was impressed by that, so. Not, again, taking away from anybody else, but these are things that among a big, good number of good candidates that jumped out at me. So I'll just toss that out there for consideration.
Right. We did have a lot of great candidates and I agree with the recommendation from Mark Priest. This is, we say all of the commissions take a lot of time and effort to get your feet on the ground, but this one in particular, and he even mentioned in a letter he wrote to us about the ranking, the nonprofits, and he's familiar with that and knows that process and, and I think that's helpful to have somebody to fill that term.
I would also support Mark Priest.
I agree.
I, I do too. And Mark also, he's retired now, but he was the minister at Zion Luther over in the Northside neighborhood and showed a real concern for the neighborhood, which was, you know, certainly appreciated by the neighborhood residents. When there were issues in, in the neighborhood, he was, he was right there on them.
All right. It appears that we have our two commissions, the, the person selected. So could I get a motion to approve for the Historic Preservation Commission Northside, Deanna Toman, and for the Human Rights Commission, Mark Priest?
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Burgess, seconded by Harmson. All in favor say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Motion passes six to zero. All right. And then we are on to items number 12, which is announcements of vacancies new. Community Police Review Board, one vacancy to fill an unexpired term upon appointment through June 30th, 2026. Applications must be received by 5:00 PM Tuesday, August 29th, 2023. Could I get a motion to accept correspondence?
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Dunn, seconded by Burgess. All in favor say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Motion passes six to zero. Item number 13 is announcements of vacancies previous. 13A is Planning and Zoning Commission, one vacancy to fill an unexpired term. Parks and Recreation Commission, one vacancy to fill an unexpired term. Applications must be received by 5:00 PM Tuesday, July 25th, 2023. Historic Preservation Commission, East College Street, one vacancy to fill an unexpired term. Historic Preservation Commission, Jefferson Street, one vacancy to fill a three-year term. Historic Preservation Commission, Woodlawn Avenue, one vacancy to fill an unexpired term. Vacancies will remain open until filled. Item number 14 is city council information.
I'd just like to remind people that the South District Diversity Markets have started every Saturday from 3:00 to 7:00 PM. If you missed that last Saturday, come, come again. There's some wonderful vendors, some great food and, and just fun to be around. Oh, also music, wonderful music. So at Pepperwood Plaza, so I would encourage people to do that. And we had all this great talk about downtown Iowa City and I'd remind people that sidewalk days are this weekend. So come out and support our, our businesses down there, many of whom are, are minority or women-owned, so get out there.
A couple of things real quick. First of all, thank you to Katie Gerlach and Better Together 2030 and all of the people that partnered for the 3D printing house project and the tour that we had last Friday down in Muscatine, was able to go down to that and, and check out the in-progress first home that they're doing in Muscatine. Of course, everybody in the council here remembers we're looking at doing a similar project here that we've approved in Iowa City, coming up sometime in the future. They're not too far from, we're Blackstone, that neighborhood up there. And thank you to all the city staff and Deputy City Manager Redmond Jones was there as well. And Red, did I forget anything other than just to mention that, that we had a chance to go and look at it in person?
Yeah, and it was cool.
And it was, it was pretty cool. I mean, I'm kind of a techie, so it was kind of, kind of cool to see, but, but hopefully that'll be a technology that will help us in our quest for affordable housing. Second thing is, I think the next time, by the next time we meet, it will be free to ride buses in Iowa City. So a reminder that starting August 1st, and again, another kudos to staff for all the work to get our two-year pilot program off the ground, so I wanted to make sure I didn't forget that. And finally, people notice that I'm not wearing my usual shirt and tie, I'm wearing this bright pink shirt. That's because I and, and I won't take any of Counselor Burgess's thunder away, we're in Des Moines today to protest the special session, trying to institute Governor Reynolds' new abortion ban. I will say, make this statement that I am a, I am a son, I'm a brother, I'm a husband and I'm a father, and I feel very deeply that my mother, sorry, this has got emotional, my sisters, my wife, and my daughter should have the same rights to their body as I do. That's all I want to say on that.
Very emotional, and I know that everyone on this council supports that and have those same feelings. We're going to move on to item number 15, which is reports from our city staff. We'll start with our city manager's office.
Nothing tonight, Mayor. Thank you.
Our city attorney?
Nothing for me either. Thank you.
City clerk? Item number 16 is adjournment. Could I get a motion, please?
So moved. Taylor?
Second. Burgess?
All in favor, say aye. Aye. Any opposed? We are adjourned.